Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission, holding a virtual meeting on Tuesday, June 25th. This afternoon, we've had a little bit of change in the seating. We expect it to change. Mr. Lowe and Mr. Yeski will leave partway through the meeting at that point.
Not together, Howard.
No, not together. Ms. Jenkins and Mr. Wells will seat for them. And hopefully, we will be joined soon by Mr. Levy. If we don't have five commissioners to seat, we will ask the applicant to agree to four, and we will act according to the applicant's wishes. And with that, we begin with our first item, which is 70 to 74 and 80 to 86 Greenwich Avenue. It's the AGW Greenwich LLC for a final site plan to change a second floor use from a salon to an office use at that address. And representing the applicant is Mr. Hagney. Good afternoon, Mr. Hagney.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the commission. If you could bring Mr. Ridberg in too, since he is the architect for the project.
I think we're going to talk more about uses, Mr. Hagney, but if you wish to talk about architecture.
I thought I would start with the Google Earth picture of the building, which is slide five in the presentation material.
We would very much like you to focus on the matter at hand, which is...
I will get to that in a very brief moment, Madam Chair. So this building was built in 1963, and I think when you see the photo, you will recognize it as something built in the 60s with the colored paneling on the second floor windows. It was built with four stores on the first floor and six offices on the second floor. There were office renovations in 2005 and 2010 for architectural offices. Then in June of 2019, 984 square feet of the space was renovated to be a beauty salon with five stations. So that was just five years ago. The seven stations would require 14 parking spaces under our regulations, although I'll get to this being within the front and rear building lines. And in March of 2022, just two years ago, 2,145 square feet was converted from office to a gallery. So from 1963 until 2019, roughly 56 years, it was all office. And then you had, here's the building. Looks like it was built in the 60s with those windows. I think the DeAndreas may have used this style for their panels for their offices as well.
I hasten to remind you the ARC love, so go keep going.
We're not looking to change these.
Just keep talking. I want you to get to the use.
We are not looking to change these. You can see that it's very much was built as office space and remains on the exterior as office. So we've had it as office for 56 years. We've had 1,000 square feet roughly as a beauty salon for five years, and we've had an art gallery there for 2,000 square feet for two years. The owner of the building is looking at this and saying that this really calls out to be used as office space. As was discussed at the briefing yesterday, the parking demand for the uses currently on the second floor would be 29 spaces. The architect's office, which is also on the second floor, is 677 square feet. And what my client is looking to do is to reunite that space with the rest for office space on the second floor, just as it had been for pretty much the entire life of this building. This office space would require 22.9 or 23 parking spaces. So actually, the parking demand for the space would be less. Now, we certainly heard what the commission said yesterday regarding parking, and we could encourage, but I don't believe we can require all of the office tenants to provide parking, not only off-site, since there's no parking on the site, but also not on Greenwich Avenue. Would be a direction, but not necessarily a requirement.
I'm sorry, Mr. Tessie, you were saying...
Mr. Hagney? Mr. Hagney?
Mr. Hagney.
Mr. Tessie is in attendance, but I think he's waiting for another application.
Yeah, okay, so Mr. Hagney, that's a really bad sign when that happens, because it means that somebody's on... So let's just address that. You're probably arguing that the existing office use is a nonconformity and should be able to remain, and that the commission would not be able to require it. However, our regulations specify that an office use on the second floor must provide parking. So any incremental office use that you are proposing to add would have to provide parking. Mr. McRae, were you going to say something?
No, go with it. I'm right behind you.
Okay, we're aligned. Okay, so there's your danger signals. Mr. McRae and I have just aligned. Go ahead, Mr. Hagney. So the key thing here is, you do as... I hear your argument on the nonconformity, but...
And it was nonconforming for basically the entire life of this building, up until the last couple of years.
That may be as it is, but our regulations read as they read, and we are acutely aware that we are tight for parking on the avenue, and that one of the reasons that this was written as it was originally was to discourage having the burden of parking on the avenue of an office use and to free the avenue up for the retail first floor uses and potentially the residential on the second or third floor. Feel free to convert this to residential. I believe that... But that would be, I'm just citing our regulations to you and the purpose for which they're created. Does anybody else on the commission have a comment on this?
Mr. Hagney, does the back of the building have any access to the parking around the old theater?
You can get there by going, you essentially go behind the other buildings just to the south and then get the staircase that's on the other side of the, I think of it as the movie theater or bowling alley, to get over to that parking and also to the parking along Benedict Place, which is a public parking lot and where you are encouraged to have 12-hour parking or a parking pass in that space. So you can get from this building through the back alley to the public parking, which is long-term.
So the question is not one of access, however, to the parking. The question is what our regulation actually says regarding the uses in buildings and parking requirements. Mr. Yeski?
Well, yeah, I don't want to repeat, but not only the regulations, but I'm sure Mr. Hagney is aware that parking is not tight. It's unavailable. There's a restaurant that we've already approved a block away that can hold up to over 200 people. There's another one in the works. This is just not, and I'm just stunned that there's no... I was the one encouraging you to require parking, not to encourage it. So I haven't heard anything that is very encouraging from our side.
Well, if we could discuss that a bit more, Mr. Yeski. If we were to require off-street, off-avenue, I'll call it parking, would that be something that would be palatable?
Yeah, but off, not behind the building, because all that parking, I park there. That's pretty tight. Most of those are permits. You've got, whether it's 29 or 23, that's got to be 10, 12, probably 23 spaces. So I don't think it's unreasonable to find a space several blocks away, because it's just not Greenwich Avenue. It's the block behind it also. And that's why the regulations are written the way they are. So I'm literally looking for something more than, oh, I'll park behind the building, which is already packed.
Also, it's beyond that. No, Mr. Hagney, you're trying to get us down a different tangent. That's just not what our regulations say. Oh, it would be okay if it's off the avenue versus on the avenue. Our regulations are very clear on this point. Our regulations are not always clear, but on this point, I see them as being very clear.
So one section of the regulations says that if you have parking within 1,000 feet for restaurants, as an example, that you can provide for that as parking in lieu of what you have. That might be something that we can explore, finding additional parking that would be available for this.
For restaurants, we're talking office use. We're talking, what is that?
Understood. I'm looking for other portions of the regulations that could lead to being able to reestablish the office use that has existed at this building for over 50 years.
Well, I believe that if you are reestablishing the existing office use, which is you have not given up, which you have retained, then you're fine. The architectural office, you would be able to keep it because you have an existing nonconformity. But you would not be able to expand your nonconformity, which is what you're seeking to do, without a change in the regulations or without the commission waiving its own regulations. And we're not seeing the argument for that. You heard us discuss it for a very long time yesterday, and I don't believe that anybody saw that argument in favor. I'm just saying, we're not seeing the argument in favor. In terms of, our highest priority here is to keep our business districts thriving. And our sense of the avenue is that to keep it thriving, it has to have enough parking. And it has to have parking for its primary uses, which would be the retail and residential, if we have it, restaurant included in the retail.
Or fitness or salons.
Or those are the things that we have established as being uses that are a priority for the avenue. Office uses were not prioritized in our business district for this very reason. We were not... So we would have to revisit the entire concept of our regulations rather than do a one-off. And I listen very carefully to...
Not a bad thing to be considering.
Hey, if you want to send us a couple of hundred thousand dollars for a deep study, that would be great.
I will run that by my client. But I have some other thoughts that I'd like to explore, and perhaps not major changes to the regulations that might give us some relief here, rather than taking the time now.
If you would like to propose an amendment to the regulations, what I would suggest you do, Mr. Hagney, is this. Come to us with a discussion item and propose, and don't fuss with it. Just come with a very casual amendment to what, just tell us what you would think about in terms of an amendment to the regs. We're open to hearing you, but right now, our highest priority is how do we protect the commercial vitality of our business districts? And we have an inherited predisposition to obeying our regulations. Work for you.
Well, I was wondering if there were any further comments, and then I...
Go ahead, Ms. Commission, please. Because it's important for Mr. Hagney to know how the whole commission, not the speaking chair. So Mr. Lowe, if you would go ahead and then, hold on, my screen's blocked. And then Mr. Yeski again.
Yeah, I'm just curious, Mr. Hagney. Does the nature of this office use demand its proximity to Greenwich Avenue?
Not necessarily, no. It's not...
You could say that about a beauty salon. You could say that about an art gallery.
It was in some way dependent upon...
No, I think...
You could argue the convenience associated with having a beauty salon in a highly trafficked, pedestrian-traffic area would make, you know, would provide some rationale. I'm just curious whether there was something about this use that would warrant it.
It really has to do with the age when this building was built, when this was just about the time that the front and rear building lines were adopted and the rear properties were taken by the town to turn them into public parking. And there was a great deal of office space on the second floor and created on the second floor with buildings such as this. It was built in 1963. I recognize that the regulations are different now, but my point was that this building has been office for virtually its entire life. And the fact that there were a couple of changes very, very recently, I don't think changes the appropriateness of this being office.
Well, the climate has definitely changed. I think even you would acknowledge that the nature of commerce on that street is quite different from the way it was when you and I were children.
Well, if anybody remembers that.
Mr. Lowe, I would say that even now, second-floor retail is not a particularly attractive rental on Greenwich Avenue. The people who have those offices generally keep them. Not sure why the prior owners of this building attempted to make this change, but generally, retail on the second floor is not as viable as it is, obviously, on the ground level where you walk right in.
No, I know. It's a problem. And we, as a commission, recognize that it's a problem. And there have been dispositions in vacancies, if you will, over a period of time. But that doesn't change the underlying problem with the parking.
Yeah, and if you go back and you look at how we wrote 6103... I'm sorry, I've already spoken my piece, but you look at how 6103 is worded. Go ahead, Mr. Yeski.
Yeah, I just want to add, Mr. Hagney, I'm sure if you want to come back and suggest a discussion item and some changes, keep in mind that we're talking about the entire avenue and probably a block on either side. And there's a lot of space that could be converted to office, and it's just not your space, your building. That's not our mission. So I really think that when you come back and you've been through zoning changes, you're going to have to justify for the entire avenue, and I would say one block either way too, because of everything we've just said, that the parking would jeopardize Greenwich Avenue. So we talk about this building, and it was built, maybe office, great, but there's a lot of space up and down the avenue that could be converted to offices.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one thing that came up as part of the briefing discussion yesterday. As a precedent, why this is different. Building was built as office, used as office for more than 90% of the time that the building was there. And so I think it's different than someone coming along now and saying, well, we want to create office space where none existed previously. So I think there is that distinction, and I think that addresses the concern that the commission has regarding a precedent.
On the other hand, regarding a precedent, you have given up your nonconformity much too, and considering how difficult it is to give up. Mr. Yeski, anything else?
No, I don't want to respond to that. No, I think we said our piece.
We said our piece. Okay, Mr. Lowe, last comment. Mr. Lowe, geez, I'm zoning up. Mr. Wells. No, no, Mr. Wells. This is Mr. Wells. No, Mr. Wells.
Well, Pat had his hand up first, but...
I'm sorry, Mr. Leroux, sorry. Patrick, unmute?
Please let the commissioners go first. I'll follow after.
Yeah, he normally prefers that. That's a kind of, go ahead.
Okay. Hopefully not to cause more confusion, but from my simple mind, if the applicant is able to find dedicated parking, you know, within walking distance to this space, I'd be hard-pressed to have a negative view of the application. Okay, I just want to get that out there, because that doesn't seem to be coming through in these comments.
Because, Mr. Wells, what the regulation says is not that second-floor use is prohibited, but that the use must provide parking. It asks for it to be on-site, which we recognize is non-realistic in most cases, but it's the providing of parking is required. So if the applicant were to provide parking, it would be a different animal. And Mr. Hagney is well aware of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Mr. Leroux?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Hagney, I mean, you don't have to answer now, but the operations that are going in there, is there a description of what type of work is going on? I see a fair number of seats, not more than what the parking would require for the number of, for the square footage, but I think it may have some impact on the discussion of knowing what type of activities and, you know, the sort of the frequency of visitors to the site and whatnot.
The layout that Rudy's put together is really pro forma. It's how you could use the space in a realistic way without overcrowding it. And so that's what we're showing as part of the plan that we submitted with the application. We don't have a specific tenant for the space at this point, but the owner's belief is that the better use and the more attractive use for the space would be office rather than one of the Use Group One uses.
Yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah.
So I think Rudy would say that that was a realistic layout for an office use, not overcrowded, but not sparse either.
Would that number be a possible limit to employees or what have you? Is that a realistic number, or is that, again, just a space planning exercise?
Yeah, that's a discussion I'd like to have with the client as to whether that's one of the options we could look at in addition to exploring available parking to follow up on Mr. Wells' point.
So, Mr. Hagney...
I say that, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. So, Mr. Hagney, look, when we talked yesterday, one of the things that we mentioned was we did do, we've had a couple of parking studies on the avenue. We would have to do another parking study. We would have to figure out if there's an issue renting out the second floors in general. I would not be guided by how this one specific building was used. I find that frankly, a thin argument when the next applicant comes in. His name could be either Tom Hagney or John Tessie. So we would have to do a study, again, determine what are the issues on the avenue and whether we need to be addressing second floor. But our highest priority is to protect the avenue here. Mr. Levy, and then I think we've given Mr. Hagney enough feedback, and we should move on. We have a very long agenda tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It would be very good to come up with something that acknowledges the viability of existing buildings. And if our regulations are standing in the way of the viability, it's really our task to try to come to terms with that, so...
But in general, if you go and you very carefully read the wording of 6100, 6103, 6158, all those regulations that apply, what they are geared for is to maintain what you and I prize so highly, retail continuity, the vitality of the avenue and residential to where possible. So our question would be, here we have an avenue that's doing well. If it isn't broke, do we want to fix it? Well, the thing to find out is, are we sure it's not broken? So that would be, yes, you're right, but we would need to do a whole study. A few years ago, when the avenue was very slow, we got feedback that it was hard to rent the second floors. We have not gotten, and I get those emails. I haven't gotten any feedback like that since the beginning of COVID. So if we got that feedback and a landlord reached out to me and said, "Commission, please consider changing this," right now, the avenue is solid, from what I can tell. So I'm scared of damaging it, because we have regs, and I don't want to hurt it. You know how hard we fight to protect every single inch of it all the time and all the other commercial districts? We're going to talk about some of those later today. Anything else, folks? All right, Mr. Hagney?
Madam Chair, if we could just continue this, and we have lots of time, since it's just been the first time on the agenda. And I can go over it with Pat and discuss with my client and see what creative solutions we can come up with.
Yeah, feel free, propose us something. Tracy is going to be revisiting some of the last parking study we did, which is now six years old, but we're going to go back and see what it found, because it was very well done, and we're going to reconsider. We're always thinking about these things. But again, you know where our priorities are. You could rent there, Mr. Hagney. No, just kidding. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Hagney.
I am definitely in office use here.
Okay, I look forward to seeing you, Mr. Ridberg and Mr. Hagney, later on in the evening.
Yes, we shall return. Thank you.
All right, our second application, I'll wait till they come in. Who's representing 280? Tony DeAndrea.
And Mr. Basili, we're going into the public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Basili, he came on. We can hear you. You tell us when people mutter or interrupt too much. Feel free to just jump in and establish good process.
But it's all right, okay.
Thank you, sir. Mr. DeAndrea, 280 ORD LLC for a final coastal site plan and special permit to demolish the existing structures and construct a new single-family dwelling with its amenities. This is at 278 and 280 Otter Rock Drive, RA1 Coastal Overlay and Flood Hazard Overlay Zones. Mr. DeAndrea, if you would, go ahead.
Good afternoon, and thank you. My name is Tony DeAndrea Thomas. I promise I won't read anything and I won't talk too fast. But I am representing 280 ORD LLC, and they are the owners of the 2.34 acres in the RA1 zone. With me tonight is Robin Kramer, the landscape architect of Robin Kramer Design, and Tanner White, the architect of Tanner White Architects LLC. Both of Robin and Tanner are very familiar to the commission. They've done multiple jobs in Greenwich as landscape architects and architects. And I know you're probably familiar, but I'll reiterate it. About a year ago, the property was created when number 278 and 280 were merged into one lot under the P&amp;Z application 2023-214. And that was done in July, and the map was filed as map number 9371. Currently, the property is known as 280 Otter Rock Drive. As you mentioned, we are here because it's in the coastal overlay zone, and we are proposing to construct a home that has a cubic volume greater than 150,000 cubic feet. For reference, the property itself is more than 300 feet from the actual mean-high waterline of Greenwich Harbor. Oftentimes, at this point, we digress, if you will, and go over to a response for comments made at the briefing. But if you would indulge me for a few moments, I'd like to describe a few features of the property that are significant and that will be expanded on by Robin for sure, when she describes how the design developed. The topo is unique in some fashions. The original house that is currently being demolished as we speak sat on the top of a hill, basically in the center of the current property. At that time... At that time or until it was demolished today, the, um, first floor was at elevation forty-two point seven and a lower level, which contained the garage and the lower level floor, was at thirty-five point six. So approximately seven feet lower to the garage, so the house sat up on the hill. And from that house site, the topo dropped to, uh, twenty-nine in the northwest corner, um, which, um, well, it's the northwest corner, it's down at elevation twenty-nine. And then it dropped also in the westerly side, all the way down to twenty-two, um, where a pool existed. And then from the middle of the lot where the house is located, it drops very steeply down to elevation ten along Harbor Drive and a little bit higher to elevation eighteen, where the driveway enters in the northeast corner on Otter Rock Drive. It is noted in the staff report that the property is located in the, um, AE fourteen, but I would point out that's, um, limited to the very, uh, southern edge of the property along Harbor Drive and Otter Rock Drive. All the development currently and proposed would be in the X zone. I will, I'd like to point out that all, um, public utilities are available to service the existing property. They will remain available for the future and all new utilities will be installed underground. The sanitary sewer connection is already into the property. It's been inspected by the sewer department and the proposal for the new home would be to connect to the existing lateral, um, in the vicinity of the northeast side, um, south of the existing driveway where the existing, uh, lateral enters the property. Robin will describe her design, but I'd like to point out a few things that are important about what she's going to describe. Um, I will point out that the proposed driveway is located in the northeast corner of the property on Otter Rock Drive in virtually the same location as the existing driveway. The pool, which is proposed for the westerly side of the property, um, is, um, less than one foot higher than the existing one. The existing pool, uh, deck is at twenty-one point seven. The current proposal is to construct the new pool at twenty-two point seven. Uh, the grading in the northwest corner, which is a significant issue because it's mentioned in a series of deed restrictions, the grading in that northeast corner will not be altered, um, from the existing elevation by more than a couple of inches. And then finally, the south, the grading along the south side has been designed to provide a uniform slope from the higher portions of the property down to Harbor Drive and Otter Rock Drive to soften the, the appearance of that high profile without, um, constructing walls. And then finally, I'd like to note that the existing first floor is forty-two point six. I mentioned that a moment ago. The proposed first floor will be only thirty-seven point seven, um, uh, but, well, virtually five feet lower. And the original garage serving the, the home, um, that is now being demolished, uh, was at thirty-five point six and the proposed garage is at thirty-five point five. So those factors are significant. The house is going to be lower at the first floor level, driveway is in the same location and the pool is, um, proposed at the same elevation. So thank you, Pat, for this topographic map. Um, and you can see that the house located in basically the center of the home, uh, which is where the new house will be proposed. The, the pool on the westerly side is at the, um, same elevation as what is being proposed. In the northwest corner, you can see is a very square, flat spot and that is going to remain at the same elevation. The steep, um, portion of the property to the south of the home, I mentioned, will be softened by grading and some places, um, lowering it a couple of feet, um, uh, to maintain a consistent grade around. As you can see there on the proposed development plan, that has a uniform, uh, slope, no walls. There is a very short section of a, of a small, um, piece of wall, not on the property line, but, um, uh, just south of the proposed driveway. Um, a couple more points that I would like to make about the drainage. It's been designed in accordance with the town drainage manual. Um, we were able to design a very effective, um, uh, and very simple system consisting of storage reservoirs under the northerly parking court and around the pool. It's designed to reduce runoff volume and peak discharge rates.
Um, let me just hold you up for a second. Yesterday, there's, first of all, two things, Mr. DeAndrea. I think you heard from the briefing yesterday that we really had two significant questions for you on this application that we, as you know, this is a very dutiful commission and we have read all your material. Um, we had two questions. There was some confusion about what year's storm.
Yes.
And that's the only thing you would need to clarify on the drainage. And then we talked a lot about your landscaping, your tree removal, the tree inventory and your tree replacement plan. If you want to focus on those, we would be able to move ahead.
I will, thank you very much, and I.
Oh, wait a second, Mr. DeAndrea, Mr. Lo, go ahead.
Okay.
And, and the F, do we, uh, did we clarify the FAR issue in the basement?
I, I was going to mention that.
Yep, good point. I had forgotten that. Thank you, Mr. Lo.
That was on my next check, I, check list item. Okay, let me head to the drainage.
We could take down the, the visual.
No, no.
No, we've seen it.
Okay, all right. So in response to your inquiry yesterday about the drainage, the, um, the mandate from the drainage manual is to design for twenty-five year storm. Um, one of the requirements or criteria in the drainage manual is to provide runoff reduction. So what we were able to do is not only meet the minimum requirement of a reduction for the one-year storm, we provided a reduction for all storms, one, two, five, fifty and one hundred. So there'll be a, a runoff reduction in, in all storms, meaning volume being reduced at all times for all storms up to the one hundred. So we're required to meet only the one-year storm, but we have proven through our storage reservoirs and controlled discharge that we are reducing, um, the volume because we're able to infiltrate some of the water, um, and thereby reduce those, um, volumes. And similarly, the peak rates are reduced for all storms. And we have accomplished that, as I just mentioned, by storage in three different locations on the property. One is in the northern, um, parking court where we have a deep reservoir under permeable pavers for pa- um, for the pavement. The second storage area is around the pool or between the pool and the, in the dwelling that has a, um, a typical deck with slats that have an opening between them. And under the town drainage manual, as long as we have the openings between the slats and a storage reservoir below, we have a, a permeable surface and we're taking advantage of that with a storage reservoir of sig- of significant volume, all detailed. Um.
Okay, so Mr. Mr. Wells, is that answering the questions you raised yesterday?
Sorry, just unmuted, uh, it, just looking for a clar- clarification. First of all, uh, I don't see the chart showing that. I, I see the charts showing, uh, the calculations, but not, not a summary chart. And when you say the peak rates are reduced for all storms, you're saying just up to twenty-five years, right? Or are you saying up to a hundred years?
The, the, um, the, the, in the drainage manual, I mean, excuse me, in the drainage report that you may have received initially, it was noted by Juan that it was omitted. Um, and it has since been presented to Juan, um, and Heas confirmed that on his, um, latest, um, summary report on the twentieth. So we, we recognize that that was omitted, Mr. Wells. And it's very good that you noticed that the chart was missing, but it has been produced and it has been provided to DPW. But I'm, I'm telling you that based on our analysis and based on the report that was reviewed by DPW, Mr. Juan Paredes, the, um, we are able to demonstrate that we have a, a reduction in, in runoff for all storms through the one hundreds, keeping in mind that we're only required to do it for the one year.
Okay, right, so, so for, for both volume and, and peak, you're, you're achieving that up through one hundred years.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, sir. It, it's, it's, it's critical. Yes, sir. Um, let's see, there was one other.
Before you go on, Mr. McRae has his hand up.
Yes.
Uh, I think, uh, for Mr. DeAndrea, there's, um, eighty-four hundred cubic yards of fill being brought to the site?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the fills being brought into the site to accomplish exactly what?
It's part of the landscape design and I think Rob- Robin will be able to, um, expound on that a little more. But what I mentioned a few moments ago is that we're trying to make a uniform profile, um, to soften that abrupt drop in elevation. I wanted to quantify it by May. Um, we had about, we estimated about eighty-four hundred yards, cubic yards. We did a couple of math today, um, well, I went back to the site today to actually observe the fact that they were demolishing the house. Um, but at that time, there were two trucks moving, um, the, uh, debris from the site. So they would be load one, drive out, load one, drive out. I don't know if there were more trucks coming or going, but I saw two. So if we did the math and did two trucks, we figured an eight-hour day and you did it cons- consistently, you would only be traveling on the roads for one month to remove all that material, assuming as little as twenty yards in a truck. So that's not a big impact. And then keeping in mind that it's not a solid month, there are certain elements that are done at, at one time. You might bring in some over a period of two months or three months. So it's not a significant number of trucks rumbling down the street constantly for three or four months. So I think that's a, a significant factor. We want to affect this design and I think Robin will be more than qualified to do, to describe it a little better than I. There was a question raised about grade plane yesterday, if I may, just touch on that quickly. The main dwelling, um, has a, um, first floor of thirty-seven point two. The grade plane was determined to be thirty-four point eight. The differential thereby is two point four. That's less than three feet, the threshold, um, at which we publish, that's the threshold at which we would have to count some of the basement. If we exceeded three feet differential from the average grade around the building, which is known as the great plane, excuse me, then we would have to count, um, fifty percent of the basement floor area. In regard to the pool house, the first floor is proposed at twenty-two point six and the grade plane also is computed at twenty-two point six. Um, in essence, the, the grading around the pool house is just a couple of inches below the, um, the first floor. So I think that hits all the high points. I think it is important for Robin to discuss tree removal and, and, um, the grading plan. But just keeping in mind, nothing is done in northwest corner. The pool is at the same elevation as the existing, the driveway is in the same location and the first floor of that house is five feet lower than existing. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, did we hit the FAR yet before Ms. Kramer starts?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, we did go, we got it.
Okay, you got it. You're good with it then?
Yes.
Because you, you're our grade plane expert. Okay, Madam Kramer.
Yeah, you just explained it there.
Okay. Go ahead.
Good evening. Uh, thank you very much, Tony. I appreciate that, uh, summation and explanation. It is a complex site, that is for certain, um, and in a certainly predominant area of Bell Haven. So thank you to the commission for your time today. Obviously, I'm the landscape designer based here in Connecticut in Greenwich and I certainly take very seriously the stewardship of the landscape and certainly after new construction where so much is imposed, uh, on a site, including, you know, sophisticated drainage. And we sort of come in later and make everything beautiful, but it's also more about what's happening in the future. So, you know, it's definitely my objective as a firm, a landscape firm, but also of the homeowners to mitigate the demands of new construction on the land, you know, by supplying really a layering of plantings. So trees and shrubs, perennials, ground cover and sort of stitching everything back together so it can grow for the future. The design development was really informed by the existing impositions on the landscape. So the house is predominantly in a similar place, although it's having a different, um, different heights and sort of slightly more expanded rather than height. Um, the pool, as Tony mentioned, is roughly less than a foot where it exists from currently and we have kept the same curb cut. The big issue of grading and fill really comes from the front of Otter Rock and Harbor, the whole bend of that and this house sitting on the hill. I'm just trying to sort of create this bowl shape that then will come up to meet the house to avoid having tall foundation walls. I really think, you know, that we want this to be as gentle an exchange between architecture and landscape as possible. So, um, in addition to what we will, to the existing trees, if you could just, if we could just share a screen here, uh, the, uh, we just need the host to let us share.
And Ms. Kramer, we have these materials that you're showing?
Uh, no.
Okay, I, if you could please provide them at the end of the.
Of course.
And so, and this is, um, I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Kramer, this is a bit of an issue when we get information today for a hearing at four PM.
Certainly.
If everybody is giving us information at the last minute, which as you know, often happens, we are, it, we are not able to review it because we're also doing other P and Z work today. Uh, the decision letters have to go out today as well. So, uh, if you're giving us new information, we're going to need time to absorb it. Just so everybody is clear on that.
Understood. I thought this would be a simple way to.
Okay, go ahead. Let's see if it does, but.
All of the trees, all of the trees circled in red would be, um, would be remaining. And, um, there's some trees that we'd be transplanting, some older apple trees. All of the non-invasive slope plantings that exist around the rock outcrops on, uh, Otter Rock and Harbor Drive would remain as well. As long as, and along with the existing plant material, we have proposed to plant seventy-eight evergreen trees, thirty-four deciduous trees, which include twenty dogwoods along the perimeter of Otter Rock Drive and Harbor Drive, six hundred and ninety-seven evergreen shrubs, seventy-three deciduous shrubs, two hundred and seventy-two grasses and six hundred and nineteen perennial pollinator plants. And along with this plant list, there's a full program for fall planted bulbs that will continue to naturalize over time. So in my opinion, you know, Tanner has masterfully designed a home that gently sweeps across the land and sits into the topography. The landscape then wraps the architecture via a series of layers and levels that will mature more into a park-like landscape. So that's sort of my description of what I'm attempting to accomplish at two eighty.
So your removal, replacement, um, just run it by again.
So there's.
Total removal is how much?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, retaining how many?
There are, I was at sixteen, I believe, and twelve are being added.
Hundred and twelve and species-wise, the comparison, uh, versus the removal, uh, deciduous, uh, non-deciduous arborvitae?
Of course, all of the, um, trees that are being removed are deciduous. We have seventy-eight evergreens that will be added.
How many arborvitae does that include?
Seventy-eight.
Okay, so when you say evergreen, you mean arbor, arborvitae?
Well, in terms of trees, the, in terms of evergreen shrubs, I have six hundred and ninety-seven.
Um, okay, in terms of trees, so you're counting, um, I, I guess something like a suda as in that all your evergreen trees are going to be arborvitae's.
Madam Chair, a lot of the information that you, a lot of the information that you're looking for, actually, we've never received. So rather than get into the crazy detail now, maybe we should get all of this information.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. McRae. Okay, so I, thank you. Okay, as a matter of fact, Mr. McRae, you go with it. You go, you're on a roll. Go ahead.
Right, uh, as, as I'm looking at the landscape plan, it, you know, you're encapsulating, as you're saying, the, in trying to soften the edges between the architecture and the, the landscape. Um, I, I'm seeing a lot of, uh, perimeter landscaping, some of it's existing, some of it's new, but a good portion of all of this, the playing lawn, another lawn, uh, the whole lawn in the front is just, just grass. Um, we haven't received conservation comments, but I would, would, wonder is, you know, is there something? wonder is, you know, is there something else that could be done to make this more of a park-like setting with trees intermixed as opposed to on the perimeter? And try to do something different with just large expanses of lawn. I I see that it's, you know, it's, you'd like to have some playing spaces up front, but it seems that we are creating this kind of edge perimeter fence of landscaping and then this just open area inside.
Yep.
And I guess the view is the the club across the the, if he was the club across the the tennis course?
Right.
I think it's, actually, it's not even across, it's it's across the mansion across the street. That's the view, correct?
Ms. Kramer, he's asking you a question.
I'm sorry, you're asking if the views across to the tennis courts?
Yeah, so if I'm standing at the house looking across the expansive lawn, I'm looking at the mansion across the street. I'm looking across the
Correct.
tennis courts at the club and then beyond that, so. But it's added at higher elevation, so I guess you get some kind of a view. So if you did do some plantings other than lawn and actually intermix some some more trees in all of that expansive lawn in the front, you really wouldn't be obstructing too much of a view, would you?
No, I think, and certainly, you know, picking trees that, you know, grow to a canopy of somewhere around thirty to forty feet over a tree that grows to seventy to a hundred.
Okay.
Future.
Yep.
I mean, obviously, people are very conscious of views.
People are conscious of views. Mr. McRae, is that good?
Oh, yeah, I think I think the idea that you're trying to bring the landscape to incorporate it with the house. What I'm seeing is where there's a buffer between the house itself and the the landscape, i.e. the patios, which all have kind of step downs to this. So in in a in a strange sense, the front yard of the house is actually the backyard of the house.
Correct.
That's that's the view because the it it's kind of flipped and then the pool itself on that one side. So I think what I'm really looking for is is can something be done to limit this huge expansive lawn? And possibly shake up the the amount of regrading that can be done, the four hundred cubic feet is a lot of filter you brought in and out. Is it possible to actually keep some of the existing grade, although it's steep? It's a natural topography that may lend itself better to to, you know, keeping the house itself, the new house in more of a natural environment on the site as opposed to when it's been artificially manipulated to to create this open lawn.
Well said.
I mean, of course, we can always add more treats. I'm I'm never against that.
Well, I, but Mr. McRae is also asking you to reduce the grade and keep more of a natural topography. We fight against this because our regulations don't specifically address it, but there is a resistance that everybody wants to turn Hilli Greenwich into Versailles.
Of course. You've lived that. Yes, I've lived that, and and certainly not my intention. But the the fact of what is existing, I don't know if you see on the existing plan, the turret, the sort of turret terrace that they have. You know, that is raised at ten feet above grade, right? So I'm sort of taking that away, smoothing that down. But yes, of course, grading, if 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 we need to reduce the grading, and I I think it's, that's a minor adjustment. We can certainly reduce the fill if that is something that is, you know, important. But I
I'm gonna
Ultimately, this really is a sort of more gentle way for the land to exist than what currently exists. Because the way that the original owners imposed very high walls and terraces that you're really not aware of at the moment because of the overgrowth that's there. But we are not, you know, we're keeping a lot of that rock outcrops and those vegetations, and we certainly can add more plantings.
Just one last thing, the the hedge along Otter Rock and Harbor, that's existing, correct?
That's existing, correct.
Okay, is that going to be modified at all, or is that just going to stay as it is, just maintained?
As is.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Madam Jenkins?
Yes, I think Mr. McRae has already made that the point, first point I was going to make, which was whether the grading was essentially aesthetic rather than than necessary for the structure. It sounds to me like if there can be some modification to recognize existing topography, that would, that would be attractive. The forty eight trees that are being removed, can you give me an idea of the size of those trees?
Um, yes, could you just go back to the other? They range from twelve caliber, there's maybe two that are much larger, twenty four inch caliber.
So most of them are less than twenty four?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Fifteen inch, twelve inch. I mean, sorry, that we're keeping the large cedars that are really failing, they're not happy.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Love?
I will say the part of the grading determination was, again, not to have the house loom out of the landscape. So where the fill comes at that side, you know, more on the harbor and the corner of Otter Rock where it bends, is to keep that house sitting down in the landscape. And by playing with the dogwood trees down behind the privates at that perimeter feeling, I mean, I can push them further up the hill, certainly. I'm I'm trying to obscure the house from when you're down at the club and vice versa. It's sort of a, it's a little bit of a bird's eye thing. It's it's tricky. And those trees, you know, will be sighted by hand.
Mr. Love?
Again, this to to repeat, because I I was thinking of this what, before Mr. McRae spoke. But I just, just to confirm, the the so-called, I'm going to just, these are my words, the sprawling open lawn without an appreciable number of trees is essentially designed to facilitate or enhance the views to the water. Is that, is that a fair representation of what's going on?
I'm not, not entirely, no. The the reason for the grading up back to the house is not to enhance the views. The site of the house is the site of the house.
Okay, so but it's to soften that drop off, I guess, as you tried.
So, you know, the grade right there is quite concave, and I'm sort of just trying to bring it gently up so that it does look like the house is sitting on top of a hill and and you won't have a foundation wall there.
Okay, understood. Now, you did show us in that diagram or that schematic that you show us where the trees are that you're keeping. It would be also useful to identify all the ones you're removing in a similar fashion when you
Of course, I can provide that.
Yeah. That would, that would be useful. And incorporate what you've got on this with the ones you're planning to keep. That would just give, give us a a little bit better perspective on what's going, what's what's staying, what's coming in, whatever. Thank you.
Certainly.
Mr. Levy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A fellow commissioners have done a good job in looking at the landscape and trying to give the applicant to an idea of of how important it is to us. And it's a little bit difficult to look at it in plan. So, and I think that I understand some of the intentions of the applicant, but nonetheless, I just want to reiterate what everybody else has said, that natural features are important to us and to the town. The the kind of the feat, the features by that are are being reduced by the soft grading that you're imposing is it look like it's taking some of the interest out of the the landscaping. But that, that's the applicant's purview. But what we're really hoping to do is, is allow, you know, to to see if there's more information you can give us to better understand what it is, the intention is here. I think that the the gentle sloping of the site certainly sounds like a good one, but are there opportunities that are being lost by making it a little bit, that looks a little generic in plan? And the use of arborvitae seems to me to be a lost opportunity to use species which are native that are represent more of of the neighborhood. But appreciate, I appreciate the the attention that you're trying to give to it. And and the discussion is a good one. I, but arborvitae is a, is a sore point. And it
I can appreciate.
It it's, it's, it makes for a nice suburban hedge. But there are other much more appropriate kinds of hedges to to use for for hedges. Arborvitae's are trees that are good for creating a copse of 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 trees and which are kind of a nice focal point and have have a lot more to do with their natural habitat. And the the park-like setting is is really the kind of thing that we could like to think about. But that can be interpreted in many different ways. So I appreciate the discussion from the other commissioners just to try to give a little bit more context to preserving the neighborhood and its look. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Yaski?
Yeah, this is not a landscaping question. Maybe Mr. Deandry can answer. Given the count, the FAR and particularly the grade plane calculation, is there any obstruction of views of the neighbors? I don't see the current height, but I know it'll change on the grade plane. And you're you're within the the zoning. I'm just wondering if there is any possible obstruction of views of the water by neighbors.
I I can address that because I I looked at that in my preparation for today and earlier on. So we had a, we have an aerial view of the of the property. And we have it from two different angles. Let me have this. So I have my assistant here, the brains of the outfit. So what we did was we took the aerial and we looked at where the neighboring home is and just, and guessing, if I, if I may say that, as to where that view is likely to be. And I believe that it would be, let me just get my southwest, there's one more, a little G I S. I got two G I S here, I'm looking for the other one. I just had it, it's all right. There it is, okay. So we estimated that the elevation of the adjacent neighbor, which I believe would probably be, in this case, number two seventy six Otter Rock, and knowing where that home is on the aerial and looking at Google Earth, we, I believe that the view line would be to the southwest, which would put it across that northwest corner and across the top of the existing and proposed pool. So recognizing that nothing is being done to change the grade in the northwest corner, and the proposed pool would be at the same lo, same location and elevation, then it appears to me that the corridor of the view line for two seventy six Otter Rock would be the same. I don't see any other issue to discuss from that vantage point. If there's another view line that I'm not aware of from two seventy six, that would be it. I I did want to mention just one more thing in that when I first made my reconnaissance of the property, when was, the house was still there, whatever it was, eight months ago. One of the things that you notice when you drive by is you have to really work hard to crane your neck and try to see the house because of the hedge. And I think the question that was asked about will the hedge remain, Robin answered yes, and that hedge is substantial. And today, again, I made another reconnaissance of the area just to refresh my recollection of conditions, the hedge is still there, it's still significant, it's still dense. And whatever we do behind the hedge is probably insignificant. I recognize a few extra trees might not be the worst thing, but from the elevation of the home, they can be controlled, and I don't think they would block the view. However, anybody on the street can't see this house.
Okay, so Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. McRae and Mr. Yaski, I'm just going to jump in real fast on this. That's not what our regulations say about the landscape regulations. The, I don't know, Ms. Kramer, I assume you had an opportunity to read them, but the the objectives of our landscape regulations are, the first one isn't screening. It's to promote environmental sustainability, to protect and enhance visual aesthetic and natural characteristics. And when we say natural characteristics, we are, we mean the topography. Then you get down to adequate screening, which is the number three. Buffer residential uses from non-res, which is not your issue. Assist with stormwater, reduce invasive species, enhance visibility of local flora and fauna. So we're looking at an overall sustainability. We were looking, we were thinking in terms of heat island effect, et cetera. So I'm sorry, both on that. I just want to go back to what our landscape regulations are trying to do. And we leave to the applicant the discretion, which we're beginning to have some doubts about, and we're probably going to get more specific. So, Mr. Yaski, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I wanted to ask another non-landscaping, which is, I don't know whether you, Mr. Deandry, have you talked to the neighbors? Has there been any discussion with the neighbors? Because I know this is very sensitive fact.
If to add to what, to the Bell Haven Owners Association, would be, what's their feedback on your plans?
Yeah, have you had that discussion?
The the direct answer to that is last night, there was a community meeting. I was unable to attend because I was working at the wetlands agency. So Robin would be probably more appropriate to answer that. But I I do not know whether or not the owner has actually had conversation with anyone. Perhaps the owner is on or listening today, and he could respond for himself. I'm not certain. But Robin
The issue I'm going after is, we've had this a couple of times where Bell, Bell, Bell Haven has its own rules. They're not ours. We have separate regulations. But we keep bumping in, and sometimes there's a conflict. I was just trying to anticipate if they have something that they're going to raise. We'll see, I guess, in the public session, we'll hopefully hear about that. But I don't know if someone else is, is Robin, is there anything that came out of the community meeting based on the neighbor input?
I, yes, the, there was one couple adjacent, the Carols, that were not enamored with the plan.
Where, which neighbor is that?
The Carol's at two seventy six.
Oh, that's that house that Mr. Deandry is talking about. Yeah, I see it. I'm on Google Earth, too.
And but all of the other neighbors were receptive, very complimentary to Tanner's architectural design. And but the Carol's, you know, which is often the case, the next door neighbor who has to live through a new construction is less than joyous.
Well, they also have rules about, you know, you talk about hauling out material. These are private roads. I believe they're private roads. And that adds another complexity to the construction. And this is a a large house where there was at least two houses before. So I don't know whether they have rules. They're not our rules, I understand that. But we tend to bump in and kind of have similar thoughts, but they have, they have a different set of rules. That's it. Thank you, Chair.
All right, so purposes of the landscape regulations, Bell Haven has an architectural review committee. It isn't just the neighbors. And have you all met, that you have not all met, not met with them and gotten their endorsement yet, is that correct?
We had the feedback last night from the architect that they've hired to review our plan. And there was one minor wall height in a staircase that brings you from the rear
Okay.
down, so they are being
Guys, is that their board, they're being reviewed, but you haven't heard back formally from the board?
It was just last night.
No, okay. All right, okay, Mr. McRae, you had your hand up and I went over you, so
I think actually, I think, yeah, the feedback from the Bell Haven Land Company, the neighbors actually was a question. But I guess, as I'm seeing, there's four four outstanding things we're really looking for.
And also, if we could add one more thing to that list, a tree protection plan for the trees you are protecting. So the tree protection plan trees you are protecting. So the tree protection plan uh specific by species, um, if we didn't say it strongly enough where you can reduce the less environmentally valuable species to more environmentally valuable species uh that attract local fauna, especially birds and um, and also that have a carbon absorption and, you know, and heat retention benefit, all of those things. We'd love to see that. Bell Haven is a wonderful area to encourage that that green focus.
Yes.
Um, and we'd love to see uh a real uh responsible link to the environment wherever you can encourage your clients to do that. Uh, so those and the tree protection I said. Uh, so if you all could come back with that and give us ample time to review it this time, we'd be very appreciative.
Mr. Deandrea is uh has the tree removal buried in the site development. I think actually kind of thinning that out to coordinate with your drawings, Ms. Kramer, and that drawing. It seems the trees have identified to be removed and they also have a size of possible species on them already. So a lot of the work has been done. It's just more of getting it to us in a way that we can actually see it and understand it.
Yeah, because we we all had, we had trouble finding the the bits over the weekend. So it would be helpful to us.
Right. And Mr. Deandrea, I think we're still missing the sewer acknowledgement letter, and we don't have conservation comments just yet. But if we get that full landscape plan back with all the details and everything, then we'll get a better, they'll get a better idea what's going on.
If I know our conservation department, they're going to say about the same word saying, um, they're going to talk about the grading and they're going to talk about environmentally valuable
Right.
species. Okay, all right. So um, let me turn to the public for comment. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application at two seventy, two eighty up? And here is two seventy, two eighty Otter Rock Drive. Uh, first person to speak is Brian F. Carroll.
Madam Chair, would you like a clock for tonight or no?
Um, yes, why don't we go ahead? Let's do three minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you for reminding me. Hello, Mr. Carroll. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. Um, I'm Brian Carroll. I represent my wife and myself. Uh, we are the owners of two seventy six Otter Rock Drive and have been for the last eighteen years. Our property abuts the northern property line of two eighty Otter Rock Drive. We wanted to express significant concerns with the P and Z on several fronts. Our first concern as landowners relates to the impact of the plans on the area, both the neighborhood in general and more specifically on our abutting property. And also their lack of compliance with the Greenwich Municipal Landscaping Regulations. First, the plans proposing to significantly change and raise the grade of the property by as much as eleven feet and create a massive plateau across the property. I guess you could say almost what you mentioned before, creating their Versailles on the hill. They're bringing in eleven thousand cubic square feet of fill to raise the property. This actually equates to six hundred and eighty-five dump trucks of fill. So I respectfully disagree with Mr. Deandrea. This is a significant amount of trucks. If you assume ten trucks per day, that would be seventy days or fourteen weeks of dump trucks rolling up and down the roads of Greenwich and Bell Haven. That's a significant amount of
The many trucks.
They're disturbing eighty-six percent of the property, i.e. changing the grade on eighty for six percent of the property. They're adding fifteen hundred feet of retaining walls to the property, some as much as eight feet high to manage what they're creating. The plan clearly does not minimize changes to the pre-existing topography. And it clearly does not preserve and protect all significant existing natural resources per the Greenwich Municipal Landscape Regulations. We also have concerns over the um landscaping plan in terms of clear cutting the site. They are removing virtually every single tree on the site. There's numerous hundred-plus-year-old specimen trees on this property. Some of these trees were planted in the late eighteen hundreds when Frederick Law Olmsted designed the landscape for what was then Bell Haven Park, and they will be removing them. This space is also in close proximity to where bald eagles nest on our property and have for the last decade. The removal of the trees is also not necessary if they weren't massively raising the grade. They know that by raising the grade, they will effectively be killing all these trees, so therefore they've removed them. In addition, many of the trees they are removing don't actually impact their water view. Many of them are behind their house to the north of it, between our house and theirs. I respectfully disagree with what Robin Kramer represented to you in terms of the trees they're retaining on the property. If you look closely at that map, many of the trees they're quote retaining actually split the property line with ourselves and the gardens to the west. And others are actually on Bell Haven-owned land. Bell Haven owns the first six feet of the property and restricts any planting or removal on that area. So when you look at what they actually control, they're removing virtually every single tree on the property. Hundred-year-old specimen trees. And I would love to review further the list she provides in terms of the size of those trees. She represented that they're removing mostly small caliber. Having lived there for eighteen years, I know many of those trees are not small caliber.
Thank you, sir.
I I actually have more comments. Um, they're also significantly raising the grade near our property, which will never negatively impact the trees on our property. We have similar hundred-plus-year-old trees, which we have nursed for eighteen years, that are healthy. Once they raise the ground, it'll effectively suffocate the roots of those trees and put them in irreversible decline. We have large tulip trees. We have large cedars. We have large cherry trees. We have evergreens on both the north and south quarters of our property. I'd also like to specifically respond to some of the questions that were raised. You know, Mr. Levy mentioned, are they using species that are native? The honest answer is they already have native species on the property, which they don't need to remove, number one. Mr. Yeski, I believe, asked about obstruction of views. And Mr. Deandrea represented that there was no obstruction of views. I respectfully disagree with his statement. Today, we have water views from our property, both over the back of the property, which I guess would be the eastern side, and also over the front of the property. But sorry, the back would be the western side and the front would be the eastern side. The views on the back are preserved. And the reason that is is because there's a deed restriction that says they can't build there. On the front of the property, we have beautiful water views from the front of our house, from all of our front rooms, from a massive old Victorian front porch that has been in our house since it was built in nineteen, in eighteen ninety. That's a beautiful view. They are proposing to build a multi-story garage, which will destroy and decimate our view of the water, fronting, facing our front porch. So I respectfully disagree with what Mr. Deandrea represented to you. In addition, you asked Robin what happened at the Bell Haven meeting, and I respectfully disagree with how she represented this. The plans were presented to the Bell Haven Board and A R C last night, that meeting of which we attended, my wife and myself. The board declined to vote on the proposal, and the board chair Jill Oberlander expressed significant concerns about the plans. In fact, she said, we are going to hire our own engineer to review these plans. And we will review this not at least until our next meeting in September, and we are not voting on this today. So when Robin mentioned that there was strong support, to be honest, that is not accurate. There were significant concerns raised by us, other neighbors, and by the board chair about this. Further, there is actually a deed restriction on this property. So today, the owners actually do not have the ability to build this plan. They need the approval of the Bell Haven Board and the Bell Haven A R C. The restrictions in that say they need to maintain the natural grade of the property, not use retaining walls, keep the driveway in existing location, limit the height of certain structures, and make sure the structures are conforming with and in harmony with the other structures of the Bell Haven community. We have hired an independent engineer who would represent that they have violated the majority of those restrictions. It will be left up to Bell Haven to determine that. But today, they do not have approval from the Bell Haven Land Company, and I'm not sure if Steve Walco, the Bell Haven attorney, is on the call or not. But they do not have approval from Bell Haven to even build the plan they have presented to you today.
Mr. Walco is on the call, but he has not raised his hand. Go ahead, Mr. Carroll.
So in summary, we don't see how this meets the Greenwich Municipal Landscape Regulations to really work with the natural grade, the natural topography, enhance the existing features of the property. You know, raising the grade by eleven feet, touching eighty-six percent of the property in a coastal zone as well. Uh, clear cutting, you know, hundred-plus-year-old specimen trees. To us, in our interpretation, uh, that does not match the Greenwich, you know, landscaping regulations. I'm open to answering any questions you may have, and thank you very much for your time and support.
Uh, Mr. McRae, did you want to ask Mr. Carroll a question?
Yeah, Mr. Carroll, you said there was an eight-foot retaining wall. If you can uh uh inform staff where you're seeing that. I I'm looking for it. Can't seem to find it, but I'd like to kind of note it, note that. So let staff know where you've seen that on the plan, so I can actually make a note of it as well. Thank you.
Sure, we can send you our engineer's report, which shows where the walls are, and I'll have to have him, you know, point out where it's eight feet.
So you would send that to Bianca?
Uh, I I can't. Your own lawyer, Chip Haslam, will coordinate that, yes.
Okay, so Chip Haslam is your attorney, because he's on the meeting as well, but has also now raised his hand.
Yes, Chip is representing us here in the P and Z meeting.
Okay, um, we'll see if he raises his hand, but he may have thought you handled it. Okay, so um, looks like uh, we want to hear from, it is our concern, uh, as you guys know, and Mr. Carroll, as I'm sure both Mr. Walco and Mr. Haslam will tell you this. Private land uh deed restrictions are not our purview, but we like to be as respectful as we can of the of the neighborhood associations and their views on development in their areas. Um, Mr. McRae, were you done?
Fully. I understand that. I'm going to correct the misinformation that Robin Kramer provided you regarding the Bell Haven meeting last night.
Okay, so um, based on everything we've heard, does anybody else want to speak from the public? Mr. Haslam, Mr. Walco, I see you're here. Did you want to add anything or has Mr. Carroll uh put everything you need on the record? Okay, here comes Mr. Haslam. And Mr. um Carroll, I'll remove you from the meeting.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Mr. Haslam, if you will, go ahead. Soon as he's in. Oh, it didn't happen. I don't know. Try to get, oh, there it is. Okay. Okay, Mr. Haslam, if you would unmute and go for it. Uh-oh, you're not usually technology challenged. If you would unmute, Mr. Haslam, there you go. Go ahead. There he is.
Apologies, Madam Chair. My uh computer uh rebooted and uh in the middle of your estimated joining the panelists. Um, I think Mr. Carroll did a very good job uh specifying what their concerns are of he and his wife. Um, and I've appeared in front of you for many, many years, and I think you'd all agree that he probably did a better job than I could have done. Um, I think his concerns are well noted, and I would agree with him. Having looked at the plans, that there was considerable manipulation of this property and that it does not meet the landscape regulations as currently written, which is intended to minimize changes to pre-existing topography. Um, I think that's the principal issue, and I won't take any more of your time up, as again, I think Mr. Carroll did a very good job.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. So we will continue this application, Mr. Deandrea, and we will see you when you come back. Anything else?
I thank you all. Good comments. We will respond accordingly.
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Mr. Walco. Mr. Walco is here. All right. All right, Mr. Walco is on his way in.
I'll take this moment that for those who want to speak on an application, please put your hands up early so we can get through the list and and and.
Yeah, so we, because we do this based on how many people are going to speak. Mr. Walco, you know that.
I do. I apologize to the commissioner, to the chair. I I just needed to confer with my client before I hopped on. I apologize.
Yes, go right ahead, though.
I I just wanted to, I was on the call listening in and and just because I I heard that my name was mentioned, and in fact, the Bell Haven Land Company. Good evening, Stephen Walco. Uh, today I'm I'm joining as an attorney for the Bell Haven Land Company. I uh simply just to acknowledge, we've been listening to this conversation. Um, yes, in fact, the Bell Haven Land Company held a meeting last night. They did not take a position uh on this, except that they uh have started the process of engaging uh uh some professional help to review it. Uh, we do have uh restrictions, both generally in Bell Haven and with respect to this particular property. Uh, there are some uh some significant private restrictions, and I just wanted the the board to know that, the commission to know that uh because it was asked of us. Um, and so the the Bell Haven Land Company does intend to do a thorough review of this in connection with its rules and regulations. Um, it doesn't generally take a position on a more global basis, but we are looking into that, and that's that's really all I'm authorized to to say at this.
Okay, all right. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Walco.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we will see you when you come back, and we hope that everything will be resolved.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And Ms. Kramer, as you work with our regulations and you see we're based on what we've been telling you, you would like to see more specificity from us, because we're going to be working on that in the next few months. Because we think it needs to be more instructive than it is right now. Thank you. All right, and with that, we're moving on. Okay, our next application, uh, I'll wait till they come in. All right, Mr. Quackenbush. Uh, this application, oh, Madam Quackenbush, my apologies, and I knew that from the last meeting. I'm so sorry. Our next application is Putnam Indian Field School, Inc., for a final coastal site plan and special permit to increase the enrollment capacity. And we are going to clarify this, that we don't mean enrollment capacity. We mean onsite capacity, and we also mean enrollment, and we're going to try to get everything straightened out so posterity has it, has it right. Um, and so with that, I'm also going to let in Mr. Canning. And uh, will he be presenting for you, Ms. Quackenbush, or will you be?
Uh, well, I'm going to, I'll do the presentation, but I know
Okay.
Mr. Canning and Mr. Deandrea have worked closely with on this, so if there are questions for them, I'm sure they'd be happy to.
I think I dumped Mr. Deandrea. So uh, Mr. Deandrea, if you would raise your hand again, I'll let you back in. Thank you. All right, go ahead, Ms. Quackenbush, and I'll be getting Mr. Deandrea into the meeting.
Okay, um, thank you so much, and um hello to everyone on the commission. I really appreciate you uh spending the amount of time that I know you have thinking about our application and um we have, we did listen to the briefing yesterday, and so uh we're well aware of some of the questions that have come up, and um I've spent a good amount of time digging through um some physical and virtual files here to make sure that we have as much information to share with you. Um, like uh Madam Chairperson said, I think the most important thing is to really clarify for everyone's sake, including my own and for the future, you know, what we're talking about in terms of these two different numbers. As we shared in our presentation, are the way that the school has operated for a very long time. This is only uh the end of my second year as head of school. Um, but we have always had uh what is called by the the state, the Office of Early Childhood, um, a capacity limit of no more than one hundred students in the building at one time. We have always held true to that and maintained that. However, we do have a number of different programs because we're a preschool. We have children as young as two years old who attend school here. They do not come to school at nine AM and leave at three PM, um, like older students. So we have a morning program, an afternoon program, as well as an extended day option for our older children. Um, and these programs have been in existence and up and running here since at least the nineteen eighties. Uh, so our understanding going into this application, and I've learned a lot, was that uh what we needed to do due to a situation next year where we have sort of a uh anomaly of uh two-year-old toddler students entering our program. Uh, we would not be able to accommodate them all maintaining that one hundred, what we've been calling capacity limit, one hundred students in our morning program specifically. This excess of toddlers is only in our morning program. Um, and so we wanted to increase our on onsite one-time capacity number to accommodate what in reality will only be one hundred and eleven students in our morning program. When we started this process, we rounded up and said one hundred twenty-five because things When we started this process, we rounded up and said one hundred twenty-five, because things weren't solidified yet, this was months and months ago, and we wanted to make sure we had covered ourselves, it is a nice round number. But we will not have one hundred and twenty-five students onsite at any time, the largest number we'll have, only in our mornings, is one hundred and eleven students. So to my understanding, based on listening to the briefing yesterday, I think we're looking at, hopefully, you know, deciding and agreeing and documenting two different standards. One for our total enrollment, which is, you know, the maximum number of students that we will have on our rosters at any one time, which will always be more than our one-time, at-one-time occupancy or capacity limit, which we are proposing that we raise just slightly in order to accommodate the students we'll have for next year. So as part of this process, we did conduct a traffic study with Camille Horn, and Mr. John Canning is here, but we sort of consolidated all of that, you know, that was a full day, lots of data, lots of videos and photos. We had a lot of conversations with him to talk about where some of those challenges were, because we recognized that that was a concern for the town and for all of you. And we did submit video evidence today, which was to supplement the still photos that we'd already submitted, based on the questions that came up at the briefing yesterday about what was meant by the idea of this eight-minute queuing problem. And so the, just to clarify, throughout our school day, we have a number of different drop-off times and dismissal times, because again, we have children of all ages enrolled in different programs. And the one troublesome time of the day was our midday dismissal, which this school year was also a drop-off time for one class in our afternoon program. So admittedly, that was already a concern for us, and we had already made some preliminary plans to reduce that for next year. But during that time, the period of time when the traffic spilled out onto Indian Field Road from our driveway, lasted a total of eight minutes, and you can see that in the video. It is not that it was at a dead stop for eight minutes, and one car was waiting eight minutes to get into our school, that wasn't the case at all. There was just eight total minutes where we had some backup onto the road. We recognize that this is an issue, and we have some strategies, some of which we've already, you know, put into writing and plans for the fall, and some of which I've already drafted in our handbook policies that we will send out to families on August first. I also submitted today a draft of the revised traffic policy, and I'm happy to talk in more specifics about some of those strategies. But based on our conversations with Mr. Canning, and also on the feedback that we got from the Beta Group when they reviewed the traffic study, it seemed that that was a potentially positive solution to the problem, and it was recommended at some point, and someone's expertise, that perhaps we would do another traffic study at the end of the calendar year, after all of these mitigations were in place, just to ensure that we'd been making progress, we're more than happy to do that. In fact, it would be, I think, very beneficial for us to also know that we have addressed the issue. So that's, I guess, a summary statement, I know you've reviewed a lot of the material, so I'm happy to take any questions, or if there's something better directed to Mr. DeAndrea or Mr. Canning, I'm sure they can answer as well.
Madam Jenkins?
Yes, first of all, let me express my admiration for your operations. Every time I go by it, it's such a beautiful little school, it looks like the kind of place where two-year-olds would be very happy to be welcomed every morning, or every other morning. I looked at the draft handbook page that I got today, I thought that was excellent. I think you're making rules very clear to mom and dad, or mom and dad and help to what they need to do, and what they should do in terms of approaching the property. So I thought that that set of rules was very reasonable, and fairly easy to abide by, one kind of hopes. And I'm kind of, I'm the one who's so careful about language, who got all kind of tied up, and I'm really sorry. It appears that my tone yesterday might have sounded a little too hostile, so it was not intended to be hostile at all. I just want to apologize to the extent that that was the perception. But I think for your benefit, as you've already admitted, for your benefit and all our benefits, I think it would be very important to distinguish between your roster cap, we can call it a roster cap, versus an occupancy cap. So my question really is, as I understand that your roster for next year, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, your roster cap, that's very awkward, would be one hundred and eighty-three, and your occupancy capacity cap would be one hundred and eleven. Is that the way, for next year?
Yes.
Is there any way to set the same, to set numbers for school years beginning on and after September twenty-five? Or would it, at that point, be your roster cap would be, I believe, one hundred and seventy-eight? And your occupancy cap would be then one hundred and twenty-five, as you originally had requested it, to give you that opportunity to exceed a hundred students at one time?
That's an excellent question, and to respond to it with as much honesty as possible, it's hard for us to accurately predict from one year to the next, but I can tell you that our intent is actually to lower both, to lower our overall enrollment with the purpose of lowering as well our capacity over time. We sort of found ourselves in an unexpected situation this year, where we had, you know, an unspoken, but not really unspoken, understanding with our community that siblings, you know, if you've had previous children come through our school, and you have a new baby, you're coming, we've never had to turn anyone away, it's just been an assumption, the applications kind of trickle in, and it's almost a formality. And to maybe forecast another question that you might have, we are going to implement some changes in coming years to make sure we aren't taken by surprise, again, should something like this happen. But this does seem to be just sort of an anomaly of a situation where all of our morning toddlers coming in are all children of families that either currently attend our school, or have recently attended our school with children that might be, you know, in kindergarten or first grade now. We haven't accepted any new families, they're all these, you know, on the family.
So, so, Ms. Quackenbush, if I could just cut to the chase on this. Yes, yesterday, Ms. Kulikowski suggested that we consider giving you a leeway of a percent, as some schools have done, and she didn't actually, I don't remember, she said an actual number, but that way, if you got into this situation, you would still be limited by the State Board of Ed on your onsite capacity, but your enrollment could have a leeway of percent, five percent, two percent? Two percent, so let's consider that two percent, folks, and that way, we don't have to go into that. Mr. Yeski?
Yeah, picking up on this topic, Ms. Quackenbush, it sounds like you're not admitting new families, right? Is that what you said? You're just, you're fulfilling a promise that if there's a sibling, they have a space. Did you admit any new families?
We did, into our afternoon program particularly, and as well as into some of our older classes in the morning, for our toddler, our incoming toddlers, no, which is, which is not, you know, what we're hoping for either, but that was the situation for this year.
Which is what I'm getting at, if you could have, I don't know your application pool, but maybe you could describe that a little bit, because it's nice to come up two percent, but quite frankly, that's only a couple people, a couple kids. Could you have admitted more new families in the morning if you weren't under this constraint? Would you have done that?
We could not have accommodated any other toddler families because of our restrictions that we have on our student-to-teacher ratio, based on the state. It's possible that we could have admitted a couple more in our older grades. We do have a waiting list, and many people that would love to join our school. The morning program is in far more demand, as it is in every school, than the afternoon program. We do have space in our afternoon program, we offer it to families, but many of them decline because it doesn't work, especially for young kids, it's their nap time, you know, it's just not the best time.
How, how long is your waitlist for the morning?
Oh, gosh, it's very lengthy, my enrollment, my enrollment manager could let me know for sure. But we also, we're limited here in terms of number of classroom space in general.
Classrooms and teachers, right.
There's only so much, you know, we're pushing it as far as we can this next year, and it's, you know, it's okay, but we really aim to decrease our enrollment, you know, by ten, fifteen kids over the next few years where we're able to, because we just feel the school operates best, given the space that we have and the staff that we have with those numbers.
Okay, if I, Mr. Yeski, is that good?
Well, I have a lot of the questions, but I get the flavor of it, I got it, thank you.
I mean, is there something you need to know, though, for the decision, if we make one tonight, or if we want to leave it open?
Not for the decision, but for the P O C D, it'd be wonderful, but that's another topic and another discussion.
Okay, I wanted to ask Mr. Canning a question, I saw a couple of things in the video you sent that bothered me. The first one was that the northbound cars on Indian Field often get stuck at the entry of the driveway. Or maybe not often, but it does happen that they get stuck, and they are partway in the travel lane, and partway in the driveway, and I've looked back at how we have fixes. Is there any way that we could get those cars to get out of the travel lane?
Absolutely, that's what we're proposing.
Okay, the second question is, I don't remember, I didn't pay attention to this, I wasn't thinking about it till I saw the video. What, did you clock the travel speed at?
We did not clock the travel speed.
Okay, but what would you think, having seen the video?
I really couldn't give you an answer.
Okay, my take is it's over twenty-five. The average travel speed going in, when the light's green, north-southbound on Indian Field, it felt quicker than twenty-five, watching that video. So I'm thinking, Patrick, could we work on the town posting a school zone there? Even though it's not pedestrian?
Yeah, I don't know what the criteria, if there is any for, you know, does it have to be a school, you know, kids walking, or what age that is, but we could sort of ask.
And then let's just ask, because, you know, there's this, you see this huge truck pulling into the Kennedy facility, and all these vehicles, if they, the slower they go, the better off the moms and the kids are. Because there's less damage, less possibility of harm to children. Mr. Lo, go ahead.
Yeah, just to follow up, Mr. Canning, if you could provide us with a very succinct summary of the specific steps that you are proposing that will, in your mind, absolutely, absolutely is too strong, probably, to predict, but will mitigate the backup issue on Indian Field Road?
Certainly, and it's largely a numbers game, the number of people arriving and departing at that one crunch time. So we're addressing it by a number of measures, and part of it is tabulated in the report. First of all, this year, in addition to parents and caregivers picking up students at eleven-thirty, there was an afternoon program that started at eleven-thirty, so that was just adding fuel to the fire, so that's been stopped. So that's fifteen students that won't be dropped off in that time period. Secondly, the school has committed to encouraging more of the morning students to participate in the afternoon enrichment program, so that they would stay on longer, so that will also reduce the number of pickups in that critical eleven-thirty window, that's two items. The next item, right now, there is a fifteen-minute pickup window, parents are told be here between, I think it's eleven-thirty and eleven-forty-five, Jamie?
Yes.
So we're proposing to widen that window from eleven-thirty, so from eleven-fifteen to eleven-forty-five, I think it is. So there, we can spread it out a little bit, so there's the third measure we're implementing. They, that's working on the number side, working on the operational side. We had, the school has one very capable individual out there who works the traffic, and he works the traffic hard, but he's only one person, so they're going to put an extra person out there to help make sure that if people are on their phone, and they shouldn't be, he's going to pull them up so that we, because we saw from the video that we took internal to the driveway, that there's typically a gap of a couple of vehicles somewhere along the line, where the cars ahead of you move up, and you're talking to somebody on the phone. So that person will take care of that. In addition, and Jamie provided you with the materials, we're focusing policy on having the campus to pickup area a non-cell phone space, so that when you come onto the campus, you turn your phone off, and you don't do anything on it until you leave the campus.
Oh, good luck.
Well, so, yes, but there's a policy statement that the parents will be required to sign, so they can't say they didn't know about it, because they signed it.
Okay, a good idea, it's always worth a shot. Go ahead, Mr. Canning, what else?
And the last thing I want to say is, we did look at other opportunities on the site, in the parking lot, that we might be able to further improve things. Unfortunately, the parking lot is not very big, it's close to full, and if you put people in there, and there's nowhere for them to park, then they can't get out, and they can't turn around, so that was not something that we were able to accommodate.
How do we get that, how do we get that before us? Sorry, Mr. Lo, go ahead.
I just wondered, in your review of all this, to what extent does the light there, just ahead of the on and off ramps, impact traffic and create a natural bottleneck, even absent school congestion? There are plenty of times, particularly when the highways is congested, everyone's got their phones and their mapping and everything else, and they're getting off in Bruce Park, and they're coming through there and all the stuff. Did you kind of take that into account when you're making your projections?
We, we did only qualitatively. I can tell you a couple of things from looking at the video, during the time that it's busy at the school, in the morning and in the afternoon, the queuing from the light on those days did not reach the school. So that's a, that's a good thing, obviously. You know, if ninety-five gets closed down because there's a crash, I can't, you know, all bets are off, we have no control over that. Or, I guess, the reverse perspective, activity at the school, the queuing that's on the street that we don't want on the street was causing traffic in the southbound direction to back up through that first signalized intersection, maybe even the second one, I couldn't see that far. But by getting the vehicles off the street and into the school, we will eliminate that condition, so that would be a benefit that was not really planned.
Okay, great, thank you for your explanation.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, I have another good luck suggestion, and that is, looking at the video, I noticed there are a number of huge SUVs coming in there, and they're picking up small children, maybe your handbook could say, hey, to help congestion, maybe you could bring your smaller car to pick up the children, because like, three-quarters of them are, you know...
Ask them to sell the bus.
Yeah, I know, so it's a good luck suggestion, but anyway.
I'm certainly happy.
At all schools, they look like a Secret Service detail is coming through, that's countywide, and that's, yeah.
Yeah, you could go ahead and just try to say it, that we'd appreciate smaller vehicles, I mean, you know, it doesn't matter. Mr. Canning, back to you, how quick, I'm aware that PIPs is working on a timeline, they're trying to be set up for the next school year? And I don't know what their deadline is, but on the other hand, we'd love to see what you've drawn out, and how you might improve the site accommodation more than what we've already discussed. How quick could we get to that at some level, so we could approve that or decide on it?
We, what we have said is, we could not come up with anything by modifying the site. We've only got these measures that I outlined to you.
All right, I misunderstood you, because I heard you just say, I thought I heard you just say that, oh, now you've got an idea how you could modify the site.
No, no, I was just responding to, I was responding to Ada's previous comment, that they asked, had we considered it? And I wanted the board to understand that we had considered it.
And you can't find anything, okay, all right, rest of commission, what comments do you have? We're good, okay, so where we are with this is two percent either way on your max enrollment. Your onsite capacity would be one twenty-five or one eleven?
I mean, at this point, we have scheduled in our roster one hundred and eleven students in the morning, I don't, you know, we certainly...
I think what we should say is one twenty-five, or as approved by the Department of Health, Department of Education.
Okay.
And that would be a hundred and forty?
No, I think we should take it to one twenty five.
Okay.
Only because of Mr. Lowe's question. Now, Mr. Lowe was asking you about the traffic backup. Every time I watch the videos and the photos, the traffic queue is southbound on Indian Field, south of the lights. That's where the queue is. So the light would not be an intervening factor. It's that they get to the school and everybody stops. Madam Jenkins?
Yeah, the only thing is the, the angle of the camera from the video, you can't tell what the backup is.
Behind you on the right, brilliantly said. I was bothered by the same thing. Mr. Canning?
Yes, I can add that when we looked at the turning movement volumes, ninety percent of the vehicles are coming from the north. So I'm not saying there's never going to be a vehicle queued on the south side, but it's only one in, one in nine, one in ten.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, we assume that most people don't know about coming through Museum Drive and Bruce Park? When they're going to that, this area of town?
Yeah, the majority of our families live further north. The, the times when that does happen is as you were mentioning, when, when the highway is congested and people are routed around, then we will see cars trying to.
You could also tell them that they might have an easier time and not have to wait so long if they didn't have to cross that left-hand lane. And if they went through Bruce Park, but that's, you know.
But that depends on where they live. That's handy dandy if you're coming from Bellhaven.
Yeah.
Or downtown, really handy to come through Museum Drive, but a lot of people don't know that and don't do it. So it's, you know, it's something you can suggest as routes, but everybody, because they may not use ways because they think they know where it is, right? Okay, what else from the commission? I'm looking to kind of know if we're in a position to close this or whether we're missing items.
I think it's actually just defining the, the ask is there a hundred and twenty five additional students on top of what?
No, no, a hundred and twenty five is the maximum.
Twenty five students on top of what number?
No, a hundred and twenty five is the maximum onsite capacity at any point as a maximum student capacity at any point in time ever. Full stop. It is currently, it is, it's not, it's not on top of anything. It is a hundred and twenty five is the only capacity number for kids as set by the Board of Education. I present that number's a hundred.
Right, that's all. I, I, I thought that's what Mr. McRae was asking.
That's what Mr. McRae was asking and I was answering him.
O E C, O E C says their maximum according to the information is a hundred and forty. We're going to give the ask a twenty five.
Because.
It's one twenty five. Okay.
Because we are concerned that one forty is going to strain the queuing some more. And if they wanted to come to one forty, what we could always do is have it be an administrative approval based on, you know, the staff review. We could look at doing that if staff was comfortable, but one forty may add strain. Because we're already seeing the queuing and until we know if all the measures we have are successful. The enrollment cap would be one seventy eight plus or minus two. Oh, that doesn't quite work. It would be one eighty three plus or minus two percent? Tracy? Because what, two percent of one seventy eight is only four, that's only four spaces and only gets you to one eighty two. So they would have to do, on, if you want to do two percent, it would be the enrollment cap would be raised to one eighty three with a two percent variance allowed either way.
Okay, so enrollment cap is a hundred and eighty three plus minus two percent.
Right, but never more than one twenty five onsite as approved by the Department of Ed.
Okay, oh, the O E C, okay.
Excuse me, how, how is it you said either way? It's really only one way, right? It's with the opportunity to go up two percent. They always have an opportunity to go down. So, right? Just to be clear.
Yeah, but you might as well say we're not restricting your ability to reduce your students. I mean, why not?
Well, I mean, Tracy, you'll like it. Except to, to Mr. Lowe's point, it sounds like you can only go down by two percent.
Yeah, you could go down by four. Okay, all right. So you could go up by two percent if you wanted, if you needed to. Okay. And forget this planning on siblings, guys. That's not good long-term planning. Don't, I mean, don't ever come to us and tell us, oh, it's only going to be siblings. We're like, no. Madam Kulikowski? And then, I'm sorry, Ms. Quacking Bush, I just wanted to hear from everybody else.
Right, just, just for the record, so that people who may be listening, the two, the two percent plus or minus is the same enrollment variance that is used at Greenwich Academy. That's where that number came from.
So the minus, but yeah, so the minus.
As a plus or minus.
Yeah, okay. And we can, we can learn something. Okay, Ms. Quacking Bush, then Mr. McRae, and then I'm going to quick go to the public and then we can decide if we can close this or not.
I just remembered one other question that had come up in the briefing yesterday. So I just wanted to kind of clear the, the air on it. I did include in our presentation a breakdown by age. So you could see how many children of each age group we have. Someone asked about that. And it does show, because again, our toddlers don't come every day. It shows for next year, a total of forty eight toddlers enrolled in the morning, which brings our total in the morning to one hundred thirty five. But all those toddlers will not ever come any day. We can't, we can't fit them. So there's only ever twenty four toddlers on any given morning. So that's a hundred and eleven. That's where those, those numbers came from. So our total enrollment for morning toddlers is forty eight. But each day there will be twenty four. Someone had asked about that one hundred thirty five number.
Okay, Nick?
Okay, so just, there's three sets of numbers, the enrollment cap of a hundred and eighty three plus or minus two percent.
Right.
There is the, the hundred plus the ask of one, of twenty five at a hundred and twenty five.
Just a hundred and twenty five for maximum onsite capacity of children.
Okay, and then there's the O E C's building capacity of a hundred students at one time.
The O E C's, no, it, the one twenty five will be subject to approval by O E C. We can never exceed the O E C approved number.
Okay, so right now, we're okay with one twenty five. They have to be okay with one twenty five.
Yeah.
I got it. Okay.
Okay, Madam Kulikowski?
Yes, and O E C will not approve it until we do first.
Right. Yeah, you said that yesterday. Okay. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on Putnam Indian Field School? Please raise your virtual hand, Putnam Indian Field School application. Okay, seeing no takers, we have no public speaking. Do you guys feel like we could close this?
Yes.
All right, he's seated on this application, sorry. Did we, I guess we closed the prelim is why there's nobody showing? As having been seated previously?
This is the first time you've had the public hearing. You've talked about it a couple of times in briefing and then the hearing postponed.
Okay, so seated on this application are all the regular members. Unless, ooh, Mr. Yaski, you may have left by the time we get to decision mode, as will Mr. Lowe.
Right.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and seat for now. I'm going to seat Jenkins and Wells instead of Yaski and Lowe. Okay, because when we get to the end of the meeting and we make our decisions, they'll probably be gone. And everybody's here anyway.
That's good.
All right, all right. So based on that, yes, Mr. Lowe?
I said goodbye me. Yeah.
Okay, so based on that, this application is hereby closed.
Thank you so much, everyone. I really appreciate it.
Bye bye. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Mr. Canning.
Thank you.
I forgot to tell him how exciting it was to finally see him say that there was going to be a queuing problem somewhere.
But it was a de minimis queuing problem.
De minimis, exactly.
All right, our next application is Mr. Tessie. He's in. Pickwick Properties LLC for final site plan and special permit. This is to do a restaurant on the southern, on the ground floor, space of building three. At sixty, it's going to have two hundred and twenty seats in total. No, two ten you went to, two ten. This is now two ten. It's just posted wrong still. To, two ten seats include, which includes the sixty outdoor seasonal so that they would not have to reduce the indoor when they add the outdoor. Seated on this application, we're well, let's see what happens and where we close it, where we decide it, if we're going to close it or not. And then, Mr. Tessie, if you would go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chairman and the members of the commission. I am here representing the applicant, as you know. I believe that we have very few items to discuss this evening. But I'm happy to discuss any and all. I appreciated the fact that you had a site meeting. And I believe that I guess the picture's worth a thousand words, as they say, especially mine. They're probably worth any word of mine. But where I believe we are at, at the moment is that the commission is concerned regarding just as much, I call it publicity and direction for our indoor parking garage at the Pickwick Park facility. And you did have some questions regarding our banquet condition, which I moved the day even put that in because it's really an odd factor for us. There was a question about the fire marshal reading my notes and how we would handle valet service. I submitted to, to staff early today, I think it was early today or it was last night. It was early this morning to Bianca and Pat. Essentially a little dissertation of what I'm talking about at this particular point. And also some, basically a list of, I'll call them conditions, acceptable conditions from our point of view. I don't know if it, Pat, did, did that get disseminated to the commission? Members, do you know, by Bianca or yourself?
Yes, there was an email that came in.
Clock this morning.
Yeah, I saw it.
I did not see it. I'm sure it was sent, but I didn't see it.
I thought it'd be just helpful to move it along, the application along here because of what we, what we spoke about at the site meeting and also what I heard from the commission members during the, during the staff briefing yesterday. Madam Chairman, should I review, review those eight items with the commission or?
Well, here's the thing.
Specific questions?
Yeah, I, I would like to see, did you include in this exactly how your valet is going to function? Because I didn't see this, okay? I, I had a lot on my plate today. I'm sorry. I, Tuesdays are rough.
It's quite all right.
I didn't see this. So did you include, my question is exactly how the valet is going to work? I come and the valet is off parking a car. What am I supposed to do? Is there going to be a second guy? All of that. How's that going to work? How many people are you going to have? Are you going to get, ask the employees to park in the, in the garage? The next thing is I really wanted to see what the signage was going to look like.
Here's my, I, I don't want to interrupt. My goal is not to interrupt.
You can say that. You can say that. I mean, you can interrupt now. Those three things, I wanted, let's start with those three things. I wanted to see what the signage was going to look like. I did not want to send this signage to A R C because it is about us making this a successful operation for the applicant and protecting the neighboring businesses. And for us, this, this immediacy of protecting the, the neighboring businesses. I'd like to see what you're going to have. For example, Mr. McRide was looking, I saw him looking at the sign that had the cost of the parking to, and that says that you're closed on Saturdays. You have to modify that sign. I noticed that the no left turn sign when you come up the ramp is totally faded and almost illegible. The hours are going to be different now. Saturdays are going to be open. It's going to be free for restaurant patrons, all of that. I would like to see clarified in what your signage is going to look like. Then I'd like to see, I'm coming in those ramps. I'm not speculating here. I'm just saying that if there's anybody out there like me, I have trouble always my whole life negotiating these situations. I'm like, where am I supposed to go? I really want to see the signage because I figure there's another person like me in the world. I want to see what the signage is going to look like, that it's going to work. Have you given us that yet?
No, and I'll tell you why.
Okay.
It's a practical answer. Okay. We could spend a lot of time with the commission going back and forth on the signage. We're agnostic. We, we're making commitments. This is why I built it into the, I'm building into the conditions. And I thought what makes sense is that there's plenty of time. We, we need to get this closed and a decision made. So.
And why is that, Mr. Mr. Tessie?
Because, because of the lease, because of the conditions of the lease, pending lease. And he wants to know that in fact, this is, this is, he's not wasting his time.
So Mr. Dong can wait, can wait for us to be satisfied that he's going to have a successful operation because we've seen the signage.
But let me, let me explain. We have plenty of time on the signage because what we simply would do, and this is a classic example. Rather than waste, literally waste commission's time going back, because you only, you know, you meet twice a month. So how am I going to know when the signage, when it works? My, my position is that we should, that staff should be designated to have to approve the signage and consult with the commission. That way the staff can consult with the commission members. And we don't have to deal us on a hearing and hearing basis. So I'm happy to make a condition upon staff approval of all interior and exterior signage. Because we, you're, we have signage in Greenwich Avenue, we have signage in the lobby, we have signage downstairs in the lobby on a Level B. We're going to need exterior signage. You made a point that some signage is just faded to the point where it needs to be replaced. We're happy to deal with all of that and make the specific provisions here. We go nowhere. We don't get a zoning permit. We don't get a staff sign off unless the staff, really meaning the commission, because staff passes it along, is, is comfortable with the final signage program. That's, that's why I said, why, because then it's just a shot in the dark on my part. And we have to all think it out. Everybody's comments, I thought were all spot on, constructive criticisms, constructive comments. You want to get it right. So rather than try to rush it, I just have to, Nico just wants to know he has a deal. We have plenty of time, you know, it's going to take months for construction drawings to work it out with staff to your collective satisfaction. That, that was, that's what I was trying to get at. And so far as the valet is concerned, the valet would be, what we're proposing is there, there's valet which is free, except, you know, they tipped, the tradition is the valet is free, but they tipped. Somebody wants to stiff the valet. Maybe next time they don't see the car again. I don't know. But the, that's pretty typical, similar to LaScal. It's not a charge, it's the valet. They would normally during, what I've seen, and I think that LaScal is a good example. We see two valet during the evenings, particularly the weekends, and you see one during the weekdays. Except in the summertime where they're so busy that they usually have two, not the weekdays. I meant the lunch, I meant lunch. It's as far as lunch is concerned. Nico and, and Nabil think that at lunchtime, this is totally going to be geared up for what we talked about previously, and is in my letter really. The, the office workers and employees of the, in the office buildings, both Pickwick Plaza, which has close to a thousand now employees. Whether it's Thirty One Benedict or One Hundred West Putnam or Lafayette, that they're going to make up the bulk of the of the traffic. So what we, what I propose is that valet during lunch hours during the week would be as needed. Because they, they think that during that period of time, as I said, the, the customer base is going to be already on the avenue or close by walking to lunch.
Okay, so that's the other thing. We need to think about lunch hour signs and hours. Mr. McRae?
Right.
Mr. McRae has a question for you, Mr. Tessie.
I did read the, I did read the email. So you want us, you, you want these, these eight items to be conditions?
I, yes.
And you want to, you want to close tonight because the, the applicant is on some kind of a timeframe? Is that what I understand?
Yes, I, that's, that's basically where, where we are. And, you know, I deal with what the hand that's giving me. But I also think that we've really. It's, we haven't necessarily, we've aired all of the issues. And they're all, I think, in, there's.
I think I agree with you, Mr. Tessie. We, we have aired, we have aired all of the issues. I am not too sure if we've actually vetted all of the issues. So I think we understand them. But I'm not too sure we worked through all the, the fine detail on them yet.
I think the fine, well, I said to myself, I'm not gonna, not, not gonna cut anybody off. May I answer your question?
It's really, it's really, Mr. McRide, as a voting member, is saying that although we've aired all the issues. He doesn't feel like he's gotten all the answers he looked at, he wants. And I'm asking you the same thing. We'd like to see it. I have a problem. With your argument that you won't know, how long will it be before you know that it's right? If you come back to us and show us the signs, I, I'm having trouble with that. I don't. Being an undecided group of people. Go ahead.
Think of it this way, you know, it's. We, we don't know what it's going to be and we won't know what it's going to be. But we're being asked to make a decision on, on something that we're concerned about.
If you're concerned about, if you're concerned about the application beyond signage. Then I have to know what those concerns are at this point.
We're asking you, I'm asking you for the signage. Mr. McRide, what else do you need?
Uh, so. I think I say, we need to actually understand what happens at Greenwich Avenue when somebody drives up to go in the front door. How, you know, in, in terms of actually is their valet there or not? Just a big, this big picture, those, those kind of things. You're asking for two hundred and ten seats, sixty of which are outdoors. On a seasonal basis. So that's really, it's a hundred and fifty inside? Is that the number that's correct? I'm a little, you know, confused as, as that.
On those, on those numbers. Sounds about right, yes.
Right. You said the use of the courtyard for your outdoor dining. I don't, did we get something from the property owner that said you could do that? I know, there's a lot of little things. There's a lot of little things that I'm looking for about that, so.
He's the applicant. He's the, he's the applicant, he's my client. And there's zero question that that's what he wants.
Okay.
So, Mr. Tessie, you're, your client owns Pickwick Plaza?
Mr. Char Tony owns Pickwick Plaza. He's owned it for twenty some odd years. Or it's kinda hard to believe already, but yeah.
Yeah, well, okay, Mr. Jeski.
Yeah, I, I had a chance to read Mr. Tessie's memo. I just had a couple of questions on that. It's the same one we have on the avenue. I'm trying to protect the avenue. And one of the small suggestions I thought would be easy to do, I, I get the same language problems. Employees of the restaurant will be advised to park in the garage. Required. You wanna change that word to required?
Well, the, the commission, we said advised. Most of the employees. Probably, majority of employees probably don't even drive, but if you wanna make it a condition, it's your, it's your prerogative.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Jeski. I'll stop interrupting.
Not a, you know, a deal breaker, so to speak.
Okay, that's good because it seemed to be a deal breaker on the last one we looked at concerning parking on the, on the top of the avenue. And I'd also like to see some kind of a major effort that when you, like on your website. On marketing material, that the notion of parking in the garage. Is, is highly encouraged, or whatever the right words are. And inducements to get people to go to the garage, you get the flow going into the garage. Because again, we're trying to protect. The top of the avenue at this point in time. And this doesn't talk about, I, I know it sounds detailed, but. If you're looking to go to this new restaurant, you're gonna go into the website. And other restaurants have parking, right? You go to Arthur Avenue, you have it everywhere else. By the way, LaScal is way too small for, LaScal doesn't have a hundred people in it. So.
Yes, the outdoor dining area has a hundred and fifty people.
Well, I, I don't believe.
It's in a totally different traffic area.
I'm just making the point, that's all.
Move on. Go ahead, Mr. Jeski.
Well, I can get into an argument with him, but you don't, in the middle of winter, so it doesn't include outdoor dining. So, you know, I, I think the comparisons, again, we have this habit of making apples and oranges together. But the, the marketing around this thing is very important. People are gonna come there, they're gonna look it up. They're, they're gonna be invited to a special event. And we really want all of that emphasizing park in the parking garage, you know, a whole effort. Or else it'll all be for naught. People will just park right in front of the restaurant. So I know, just a couple of comments, some details. I just started reading this. And I could think of some other ones too, if you give me enough time. Certainly, the, the signage lacks all the detail that Madam Chair is talking about, so. Uh, you know, not impressed.
Well, you may not be impressed, okay, but we've worked very hard on this to work with the commission. And I don't understand how you're not impressed when I'm saying, tell, we'll work with signage, you make the final decision. And rather than come back and forth with the commission, why don't we just go through staff to the commission? And the condition is until the commission slash staff is satisfied, we don't get a zoning permit.
But we, wait, 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 no, Mr. Tessie, hang on a second. That's not the way the law works and you know that. We can't hear, the commission can't meet on a non-existing application that is not before us. If we have closed it and decided it, we can no longer meet and discuss what the signage looks like. You know that. You can't ask us that. We have to have it open. So what we'd like you to do is quick as a bunny. Give us what the signage is gonna be and let us, we know what we want for content. We just want people to get it, see it. Understand how it's all gonna work so that K Dong has, has a great restaurant. And you've heard Mr. Lowe said that yesterday. We're also here to help the businesses thrive. But we wanna protect the avenue. There's an issue we want also Mr. Leroy to explore with you. Which is this question of what the address given is for ways. Because we'd like it to get people to the entrance. For the three Pickwick garage. So that was something that I, I can't remember who said it yesterday, but it was brilliant. But. You can't ask the whole commission, it's gotta go. Can you, you know, the only way we can do that is. Staff sends it out to all of us and we have to one by one comment. So if Mary hates it. I don't know that Mary hates it because she's only telling Patrick. It takes us much longer. So. And you know how difficult these commissioners can be. Mary, do you wanna add something to that?
No, I, I think, Madam Chair, my only point is that we're not really discussing signage here, we're discussing parking. So it makes it sound like, oh, the signage, the signage will fix the issue, but what we're really addressing here is the issue of parking.
Make sure we get people to the parking. That's all. We, we know the building has ample parking. We just wanna make sure we're getting people to the parking. It didn't help that we had some logistical issues the day we visited. And we wanna make sure that that gets cleared up. Anything else from the commission?
Yeah, I, I, I think it's going to become pretty clear. Very quickly that there will be no dedicated parking on Greenwich Avenue. However.
No, of course not.
We, as a, as a, an establishment, a restaurant, have ample parking in the garage and it is at such and such address, whatever it is. It's be straightforward. I, again, as I said earlier, briefing, whatever, I think the public's gonna, gonna grasp this pretty quickly. I mean, do, do other restaurants on the avenue have a situation where cars are backed up and people are letting them out? Letting passengers out, right? We're not gonna be able to avoid that, right?
Well, it depends because it's a lot easier if you have an ADA issue. It is a lot easier not to be on the avenue. And if we can get people into the parking garage, it's a lot easier. Because, and I can't remember if that, if that elevator access is ramped. I don't remember it being ramped.
It is, it's ADA.
Okay, okay. So it's a lot easier. The folks that do drop off on the avenue, from what we know about the outdoor dining and all that. Are normally ADA oriented or, that's a lot of times why they get, they have, they have an issue.
Spouses, I mean, you know, whatever it is, dates, whatever.
Well, maybe, maybe, but I'll pass on commenting on other people's spouses. Mr. Wells.
Yeah, not to be contradictory, but I personally, I, I just don't know how the logistics of involving the commission in. Signage is gonna be. I'd be comfortable letting staff deal with it, having them sign off. I think they're. Extremely intelligent, smart and know.
They are.
And, but I, I don't wanna see fifty emails on different signage on, you know, the lower level, the upper level.
No, 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 no. It has to be.
I just wanna see one thing. And maybe it's worked out with the staff and then we see one thing, but I, I don't. I don't have the time to see fifty different emails on, on different signs, on the twenty or thirty different signs. Around Pickwick Plaza. I think that's total micromanaging.
So to codify for you, and I'm gonna let Patrick jump on in a sec, to answer you. The only way that we do it efficiently is if it's still open and they come before us and they show it to us. If we go to, the commission's gonna review it after you've decided it. You're in a big mess because you've got a closed application and it can only be a one-on-one communication with thousands of emails. Patrick, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, not to argue with Aron's first point, but the second point, I, I think what my concern. As, as we're gonna, you know, be picking this up the next stop is that I think we need a plan first to work off of. And not an idea to create a plan for. That would be my, I think, I think, and I think Aron's saying the same thing. Is if we could change a few items on a, on a plan that we have would be, I think, better and easier to understand than. Creating a list of items and then hoping they get integrated into a plan.
Actually, you're not agreeing with Aron. I think where Aron was going, Aron, stop me if I'm wrong. Aron was going at, hey, we got this great staff, why don't we just let them do it? And I said, uh-uh. Because staff doesn't know what we're looking for until we've seen it and can give them a box.
Oh, no, I, I understood what Aron was saying. I, I'm just expressing my preference.
Your preference is?
My preference would be to get a, a, a plan together, at least in the initial stage, that we can understand what the. And what the, what the parameters are. What, what is the applicant willing to do? Because right now it feels like the applicant's willing to do anything to get a yes tonight, but you know, to what end, you know, you know. Are we gonna have seventeen employees for the parking garage? Is that gonna be acceptable? I, I don't know where it is. And, and there's no, if there's no parameters. Then, then the reasonableness of, of the ask is, is limitless now. So I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm good, I'd like to have a, a. A corral around what we're looking to do and what the applicant is willing to do. So that we can work within those parameters together and not come up with, you know, whatever Pat Leroy or the planning and zoning department thinks is necessary.
Okay, so you would like some parameters from the commission prior to its closing, us to have seen their plan and seen their signage. And give you some parameters. If there's a hole, if something's missing, we then direct staff to complete it.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree with the signage and the location of things. I think the itemization that Mr. McRide and the Madam Chair put, I think. We know what those are. We've already, I've already been putting those lists together, but. I think the operational, the structural part of, you know, the, the amount of staff that's being involved. And, and those things, I think, I think those need to be flushed out a little bit more than what we have right now because. It's not, I, I, I just think it's a little too open-ended.
Okay.
I think there's, you know, it comes to some point where things gotta stop. Okay, we can't sit here. I'm, in, in this regard, about managing staff. The people who know how to manage staff are the owners. Are giving you parameters of what is normal. For valet service. Does nothing to do with, you can pick LaScal, you can pick, you can pick. Bell Bella. You pick whatever restaurant and see how they operate. We all know how they operate because everybody's been to these different places. Okay, you would normally have in busy times two valets. In not so busy times, you'll have one. Which, not the busy time is usually, is usually lunchtime. And so far as the comment about banquets, again, this isn't a banquet table. Okay, so I've talked about valet for you. We talked about employee, you mentioned. Employees being encouraged or required to park there, those who drive. So those, those are, those are pretty static. They are what they are. Okay, the only issue that I see is fluid is just what signage is going to say. I know where it's going to be. We're gonna have, you wanted signage in the front so people see right away there's parking in the rear. So it'll be some signage. And you do have sign parameters in the front. You need sign, you revise signage. At the entrance of Pickwick Plaza, parking garage on East Putnam Avenue. We, we talked about having directional signage when you get in, telling people to go down the ramp. And as soon as you're down the ramp, there's gonna be, I envisioned signage right on the. The vestibule for what's, what's called level B. For the stairway and the elevators. So that's the signage program. It's not all over the place, but what I'm gonna do, let me, let me just finish, please. You've made yourself clear. You want us to take the first shot at it. We're gonna do that.
Yeah, and I'm gonna let Mr. Jeski.
I'm just telling you, program.
I'm gonna let Mr. Jeski talk, but I wanna add something to that. There's a confusion point. So when people come to the restaurant. While the office building has office people in it. You have those parking spaces in front of the elevator are assigned to other people. And you said there are tenants that like to be, they ask to be close to the elevators. Now we want those parking spaces to belong to the restaurant. Are you able to do that at all?
No, not during the business day, but most of the valet is going to be non-business. People are coming in are gonna be non. Are going to be non, and, and they're, they're gonna be. Not driving, as we said, which is typical for restaurants on the avenue, okay?
All right.
There's gonna be access and people can drive there. And those people do come in, the valet will be there, as we said.
Okay, and whether you're gonna have two valets or one some of the time. Mr. Jeski, go ahead. I don't mean to hold you up.
Yeah, I think Mary and I are saying the same thing. This is not just about signage. This list, the reason I'm not impressed is all the stuff we bring up. I was looking for a lot more creativity. Let's call it communications. The owner is gonna advertise this restaurant. Forget the, the signage for a second. To, to read the sign, you have to get to the parking garage. You have to know there's a parking garage there. We're not talking about that. This, this list of things we mentioned doesn't include all the upfront communications with potential customers. Which is gonna get you there. When you look at a lot of restaurants, they tell you where the parking is. In open table, they tell you in the restaurant, they tell you in the website. He's gonna send out an announcement opening up the restaurant. Uh, he's gonna have further follow-up and marketing and advertising. That's what I was talking about. I think Mary picked up on, on the parking. We're trying to keep the traffic and certainly the parking off Greenwich Avenue. So you go to that parking garage. The, it, it's, the people don't know there's a parking garage. We need to get a commitment. That there's gonna be a, a serious best efforts to do a communications program. To educate the public that you go to the parking garage. That's what I'm concerned about. Because if not. They, they're gonna be driving down the avenue and dropping people off. And that hasn't, I, I wish we quit talking about just the signage. I, I think that's a nit. Uh, the bigger issue is to get people there knowing that there is a parking garage and then they can read the sign.
Let me respond to Mr. Jeski. I couldn't agree with you more. And I, I, I wrote a note, said dummy actually on it because. I, that was broad. And, and we talked, not dummy you, dummy me. Because I actually said that was a great idea. Somebody mentioned it, I think, at the, when we had the walk around and about putting it on the website and advertising. And I literally forgot to, I just didn't write it down. Because I agree with you a hundred percent. We talked about it.
So we're gonna add that and we'd like to get some detail there too.
You're absolutely right, a hundred percent.
Okay, then we'll add that to your list. But we need, we need, what's that mean? What, what is a plan and how's it gonna incorporate that?
Okay, Mr., okay, go ahead, Mr. Jeski, sorry.
No, that, that was just one example. I would like to give some more thought to other things. So that was my major concern, having read the list. Uh, it wasn't signage, it was letting people know where the restaurant is or where the parking garage is. There might be some other ideas too. We're just really trying to keep that people from driving down the top of the avenue and dropping people off there and causing, you talk about queues. Uh, that, that would be for a hundred people. Uh, that, that would be for a hundred people at a special event, that would really clog up that top part of the avenue, be a disaster. And I think the owner would know that. I mean, I think we're doing it for his benefit.
Um, yeah, I have a problem with that. And again, this is not designed to be, there could be some one-off. That's not the nature of this business, alibi.
Yeah, yeah. One-off I'll take. One-off is always, it's like, we, we're dealing with the school, for example, right now. We know some parent's going to go the wrong way and drop his kid off. That's the one-off, but we don't, we don't want to make it easy for him.
No problem.
Okay.
I'm on the same page, I'm on the same page as you.
Okay.
Oh, my God.
We're going to go, oh, that's good. So Mr., we're going to go to Mr. LaRoe, then Mr. Levy, then the public, and then we'll move on.
Um, Mr. Tessie, do we have a seating plan for the outdoor yet?
Yes, I, I, I emailed it to you.
That's today, that's today's, but okay.
You and Bianca pointing out that that seating plan meets the six-foot requirement. And it's not only to, and I pointed out, it's not even, it's not only in a fire marshal, it's actually in your outdoor dining regulations.
Yeah, that, that, thank you. Cause I, that's the one thing I don't think I was able to digest it for today.
Yeah, you, you, you have it. It was, uh, sent to you and Bianca.
Okay.
Thought disseminated to the commission members.
No, they definitely did. Again, it's just.
Not, but I'll be readily admit, you know, it was done, um, but was meant to meet, meet, meet the six-foot requirement for that corridor as you're walking by the restaurant to get to the plaza in the back.
Yeah, there's just some, some other standards that go with outdoor seating that.
Yeah, I read, yeah, I read them all, but that, that was actually highlighted there, right, right in the regulation.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying even beyond with building, it's, and, 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 you know, having had to go through the node discussions on the avenue, there's a lot of criteria that I just, if I could, you know, now that we have that, I can take that around and make sure that we're not missing anything. So you, that, just so you and Klein are not so much that we need to do anything with it. But now that we have the plan, that helps. Thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I, I went through that and a lot of it deals with, of course, you know, the town, but the public. Um, that's section one. Section two of that section outdoor dining deals pretty much with off-street. And I, I believe we followed it, but certainly.
Yeah, I mean, there still is occupancy limits, you know, on a square foot basis. And that's the other part that, um.
Yeah, we're in, in the building, we're well, we're well below that from a building code standpoint.
Okay. Thank you.
You, you can look at it.
Okay, Mr. Levy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I was not on the site visit, but, um, I do recall from time to time seeing an officer or somebody that's, uh, um, uh, responsible for the traffic flow into the garage. So I assume that that's going to be a critical part of, uh, how this restaurant works.
I'm not sure what you mean because people.
For special, for special events, you would have someone.
Yeah, in particular.
Require for special events, if you want us to have somebody, I don't think that'd be an issue because they're going to be.
Is that what you're planning? I'm just curious if.
No, they're just.
You see that as a, an idea that you want to pursue or you're not worried about that?
Definitely a good idea.
Alibi restaurant, there will, there'll be few and far between. If you want to put a condition that for events, you'd like us to have something additional. Um, I don't think that that's unreasonable.
Okay. If I may.
Of course, Mr. Love.
Uh, it, it, it may be useful, uh, to have a, a so-called officer there during the, the first however much time that, when that restaurant opens to, um, facilitate the process of cars, uh, going into that parking, uh, garage. I mean, it could be for a month. It could be, I, I don't know, but it, it would help, um, make people more comfortable about going to that restaurant and then, then you probably wouldn't need it again. Just a thought.
Okay. So Mr. Levy, I think he's bought into your idea. Anything else?
Yeah, you could wear a sign saying eat here.
Eat at Joe's.
Eat at Joe's. Eat at K. Dong's. Okay. Um, all righty. Anything else, folks? Turning to the public, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application at three Pickwick Plaza? For a, um, restaurant on the southern ground floor space of building three, please raise your virtual hand. Public comment, three Pickwick Plaza Restaurant. Seeing no public comment, uh, Mr. Tessie, we will need an extension to get to the next meeting.
The next meeting.
The ninth, just to the ninth.
Just the ninth?
But it's, uh, five days.
Five days, five business days.
Well, it's a must close.
I blink at five days go by, but we'll, we'll work and get you something this week on signage.
Okay.
And I, as far as the conditions.
And you will give us, you will give us an extension until our next meeting?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Appreciate you putting us on, on the next meeting very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Tessie's representing the next, I, my, my, my.
All righty. Okay. So our next application is the Mill Owners Company LLC for a final site plan and special permit to build 15 rental units, um, under our, uh, uh, six. I'm sorry, I'm going to start that again. For 15 rental units with nine three-bedroom units, six two-bedroom units, 23 parking spaces and associated work. Um, and this is in the LBHO zone on Glenville Street and Pemberwick Road. And it is worth noting that this is also a National Register Historic District. Uh.
Madam Chair, I am recruited on this.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Tessie, if you would go ahead and Ms. Jenkins, uh, you would be seated. You are the seat, the alternate, this first alternate tonight. So, um, you will be seated for Mr. Mackry. All right.
Mr. Chat, um, well, first of all.
Mr. Shacter.
Mr. Shacter is, I see present, um, and I'll let it, we have just a very brief, brief comment to the commission. I just wanted to confirm before Mr. Sha- Shacter speaks, something I didn't tell him. Uh, which is that I was able to speak to Andrew Malillo a short while ago from the HDC. And he confirmed that absolutely we will be on their.
Seven, ten, Sep- Ju- July.
Their July 10th.
Agenda.
Agenda. Um, and so we, that's the first time we've actually had it defended. We had rumors, but actually that we're, we're scheduled to be on. So with that, Steve, you may want to make just a few comments.
Brief. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, the final site plan application before you was submitted in January of 2024. The year earlier, we had submitted a pre-application for a similar building in approximately the same location. Following submittal of the application six months ago to the commission, we appeared before the Historic District Commission in February. At that meeting, various members of the HDC raised numerous architectural concerns and criticisms. In response to those concerns and criticisms, our architects made significant changes to the building's facade and footprint. At the March HDC meeting, the modifications made by our architects were well received and therefore were included in supplementary submittals we made to the commission last month. Some, yeah, as recently as today. We believe that HD, HDC's answer might be coming at its July meeting. Thank you. And respectfully suggest that having waited this long, it would behoove both the commission and us to wait until HDC has spoken. For that reason, we prefer not to speak on our application this evening. We hope you can appreciate our taking this approach.
We very much appreciate you taking this approach. I was concerned that we were not going to be ready to hear your detail until we had also heard from the HDC. That said, I'm going to ask and see if there's public comment. Um, and everybody who wishes to speak on this application, who is on this meeting, kindly raise your virtual hands and we will call on you. And, um, this will help guide how this application goes forward. I see only one person looking to speak, which is Catherine Parker. Uh, and I'm promoting you now. And then Kathy Jikovit, Jikovich, and I hope I didn't slaughter your name. All right. So Catherine Parker followed by, I'm sorry, it's Kate Jikov, Jikovich and I'm going to bring you in and then you'll be second. Okay, Ms. Parker. Hello.
Hello. My name's Catherine Parker and I'm a 30-year resident of Greenwich. And first I want to thank all of you for your volunteer time in representing our community on this important commission. We appreciate all the time you put into it. I'm here today to oppose building any structure on the green at six and 10 Glenville Street. In April, when I learned of the plans for the proposed apartment building, I mentioned it to a few neighbors and everyone I spoke with first had no idea that there was a plan to build on that corner. And second, we're very much against losing the green space of our small town center. I hope you saw in the meeting materials, the April 30th email signed by 35 Glenville households, over 50 individuals, all opposing losing the green space that defines our downtown community. I know the town charter authorizes each of you as members of this commission to both regulate and review municipal improvement projects. And there are so many in our community that do not see this as an improvement. As you know, this proposal seeks to destroy part of the existing 1800s mansion by demolishing perhaps its most distinctive architectural feature, the porcache, which is physically part of the building. It really helps distinguish the mansion and tell the story of the era and the mill area. Tearing down part of the mansion goes against the general municipal code, which states that new construction shall not destroy historic materials, features and special relationships that characterize the property. They want to tear down the porcache so that the new building can abut the mansion with only a row of shrubs between. You won't even see the mansion if you enter Glenville from Glenville Street or Glen Ridge Road. It will be spatially disproportionate to the mansion in depth, height and offset. Another special relationship that characterizes the property is the green space on which the mansion sits. It is significant to the historic area. Everyone in Glenville will comment on the beautiful tree that turns crimson in the fall and is decorated with holiday lights in the winter. And that distinctive tree plus several others that line Glenville Road and the walkway from the mill apartments and the shops will all be gone. Replacing it with a huge gray structure that overtakes the whole area will completely change the character of Glenville from a quaint village center to just another overcrowded corner. We're concerned about the traffic safety, given the increased traffic flow. And especially as you consider all the other apartments that are considered to be built at nine Glenville Road, the new DCOS that will be in, uh, coming into the shopping center as well. So the proposed building will forever change the character and small feel, small town feel of our downtown Glenville. We sincerely ask that you represent the community and oppose this building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, and then the next speaker is Kate Jikovich, if you would unmute. And then does anybody else want to speak on six and 10, uh, Glenville Street? Please raise your virtual hand.
Hi, thank you. Um, my name is Kate Jikovich. I'm the Executive Director of the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. Um, I just wanted to add on to what Catherine Parker was saying. Uh, we are indeed very disappointed to see the loss of so many mature trees at the proposed construction site. Several of these trees exceed over 20 inches in diameter and over six, and are over 60 years old. So they're practically historical sites on their own. Many are also native species and highly beneficial to our local ecosystem. I was very inspired by the community coming together to speak out against the loss of those trees. Um, I read many of their comments in the materials for this hearing and it's clear that it's a very important site for the local community. Uh, the community has voiced significant concerns about the impact on the neighborhood. And the trees slated for removal are not only beneficial to the environment, but they serve as cherished seasonal landmarks and are often decorated for the holidays. Moreover, the prop, property's proximity to the Byram River presents additional risks. I did notice that the property is basically right alongside, um, a lake that drains into Byram River. Removing these trees will increase sediment and pollutant runoff into the river tremendously. And this river flows directly very swiftly into Long Island Sound. This could additionally negatively impact the vital Greenwich shell fishing industry, as well as the many people who enjoy Greenwich Point Park over the summer. While we appreciate that the proposed plantings, um, suggested, they do not adequately compensate for the loss of the mature trees in terms both of environmental and community value. We would urge these developers to reconsider the current plan and seek a compromise that preserves more of these beautiful and meaningful trees. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am, and thank you for coming. All right. I think that's the only two speakers. So based on that, uh, we will see you after you've talked to the HDC.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much.
May I, I just, uh, have some clarity on one point. Would we be, can we be scheduled now for the July 20, I think it's the 23rd meeting?
Hey, it, I just saw LaRoe nod and that's what it takes. Cause.
Did I say that right then? Yeah, 23rd.
Yeah.
I believe.
Patrick nodded.
Uh, I believe it's 23rd, but I will.
No, I just, I just checked.
Yeah.
It's the 23rd unless.
Yes, July 9th and July 23rd or two July meetings. So yes.
Just bear in mind that if you get a design change from HDC, that couldn't, that might not give you enough time. So think about, if you want, you know, also just reach out to Patrick and ask about the first August meeting.
Um, yeah, I know it's only just a couple of weeks later.
Yeah.
You said the first, are you thinking about having a second?
No, not really. I was just, you know, we.
I was worried that you weren't even thinking of having the first.
No, we discovered that it's illegal for us not to. We have to meet every month of the year.
Okay.
So, all right. Thank you, gentlemen both.
Thank you. Have, have a good evening.
We'll see you later.
All right. Uh, Mr. Yesky, did you say that you were going to leave around now?
I did. Thank you very much. Good luck.
All right.
I appreciate it. And, uh, you know, great hearing so far. Take care.
Okay, bye-bye. So Jenkins now seated for Yesky. All righty. And with that, we go to the next application, Mr. Hagney. Um, and, uh, is Mr. Ridberg going to join you or are you on your own? Oh, he's talking. I can't hear him. So I'll just announce the application. Uh, 103.
I'm sorry.
103 Mason Street LLC for a final site plan and special permit to construct a seven-unit residential structure, uh, at 103 Mason Street. This is being built with an affordable, uh, moderate income with one moderate income unit as well, under our six, one, 10 regulations. And, uh, now, Mr. Mr. Oh, yes, you got Mr. Ridberg again. Now, Mr. Hagney, if you would proceed.
That, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, good evening, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hagney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, we had a couple of outstanding issues, uh, that we were dealing with the fire marshal on. We provided turning radius, which was also reviewed by Ada and the town's traffic engineer. Uh, we removed the center island at the entrance. Uh, and we have located an EV charger that is away from the building and one of the surface parking spaces. Uh, we have submitted an updated affordability plan, but we'll work with, uh, the housing specialist on, uh, getting that, uh, wrapped up so that, uh, we'll have that in place prior to start of construction. Uh, and, uh, uh, we had forgotten to submit the, uh, sewer acknowledgement letter. And so we submitted two for Mr. Feminella's earlier comments and for his most recent comments, which obviously are, are the same. So, uh, with that, uh, we believe we've addressed everything and would ask for your approval.
Mr. Levy.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I don't remember or call any discussion about, um, the, uh, project at, uh, uh, Field Point. There's a picture of the, the Field Point, um, landscaping.
Wait, wait, we're on 103 Mason Street.
Yes, but there's a picture in the application.
Oh.
But I was just curious, was there a reason why you included that picture of a different location?
No, that would have been us that accidentally put the wrong page in the.
I think, uh, I, I think when, when we went to ARC, they were looking for an example of the stone we were using for the wall and for the building. And Mr. Ridberg took a photograph of the building on Field Point Road, the modern. And said, this is the type of stone we're looking to use. And this is the kind of joint we're looking to have. And
Remember, we looked at it.
Have a co- that's why you have a picture of that.
Remember the last meeting I shared the visual of the modern? Okay. All right. Anything else from the commission? Mary, you had a comment yesterday.
I believe Mr. Hagney's addressed it by saying that the housing specialist will take a look at his revised affordability plan.
Yes. And then there was a comment about info from Aquarian.
Uh, we, uh, had. Uh, we uh had met with the fire marshal. Who said that uh he would want that information uh. Uh, prior to completion of the building. And if uh the water is not available or the pressure is not available. Uh, through Aquarian that we would then need a fire pump and that would be added to the plan.
Okay. All right, so that's for the fire pump. Okay. Um, any other questions? Madam Kulakowski.
Um, yes, just on the um timing of the Aquarian letter. Um, the farmer's comment says that letter will be provided at the time of building application. So I'm assuming that means that the time of building permanent application.
That, 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 that's fine. We've requested it and expect to have it shortly.
Okay.
And then, just so there's a a clarification, um, this was um. From Mr. Ridberg that because the island is obviously being removed, then the sliding gate that's in it is being removed as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, because someone asked us about that yesterday. Who was it? Who asked? The gate. Oh, it was Mr. Levy.
Yep.
Okay.
So that it's not going to be a gated community anymore.
Nope, no.
All right, okay. Not gated, not gated anything. Anybody else? Any questions or comments? Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? This is at one oh three Mason Street for a moderate income dwelling unit. Pursuant to section six one ten of our regulations with one moderate income unit out of the seven total. Okay, no hands from the public. Does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Seated on this application are Albin, McRae, Levy, Wells for Low. And Jenkins for Yesky. Seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed. Uh, nice seeing you guys. And I know, I know you're coming, you're staying. I just.
I didn't want, I didn't want to have to go through that uh.
Yeah.
Portal where I'm neither here nor there.
I know, it's rough, isn't it? Alrighty, our next application is number seven. Field Point LLC for a final site plan and special permit to allow for an additional building on site. Uh, this is under our six one ten regulation. It would contain four apartments. And one of which is designated as a moderate income dwelling unit. The address is thirty two Field Point Road. And with that, Mr. Hagney, would you kindly proceed?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Again, for the record, Tom Hagney on behalf of the applicant.
If you'll just hold on a second, um, and uh Jenkins would be seated for Yesky on this. Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Ridberg and I met with the fire marshal to go over a couple of issues uh with him. Uh, we have a dry sprinkler under the building where the parking spaces are. E V charger, again, uh, just like in the last application, is away from the uh building and on the surface. Uh. We have properly labeled it truck one rather than the ladder truck. Which is what we had used for the test. Uh, our civil engineer, uh, sound view. Has uh provided plans showing that the driveway will be regraded so that the truck doesn't bottom out. It's coming onto the property. Uh, and uh. And that, that was one of the issues that the uh fire marshal had. And uh, we showed on the plan that even uh with the outriggers, it fits. Uh, adjacent to the building so that fire access can be provided to the roof. And uh, we submit a revised affordability plan for staff's review, uh, which we'll have in place prior to uh instruction. Uh, we also submitted a letter uh from the owner, Dr. Nichols. Uh, who indicated that there would only be no more than two doctors at present on the property at any given time. Uh, and uh, that's uh, to modify the uh. Uh, condition that was placed when uh you, they came before you with a site plan back in two thousand nineteen for three doctors. Uh, and we're happy to provide a C P P. Of course, everyone knows what a C P P is, right? Rudy and I looked at each other when we saw that in the staff report and in the, in Jackie's comments, and it is a construction phasing plan.
Oh, yeah, you gotta speak to us sometimes in in slow, slow motion.
I, I was not, I was not familiar with that acronym previously, but now we know what a C P P is.
Well, isn't that how they used to write the Soviet Union, C P P?
Yeah. Uh, we're not going in that direction. Um.
It's unlikely.
And uh, with that, we will provide that the uh fire access will be uh, uh. Uh, made available earlier in the process. We spoke with the contractor. Uh, and that regrading can be done.
Pick your poison. Pick your poison. I think the question is to do it as soon as possible. So what's the earliest you would be willing to do it?
Uh, next week?
Prior to a, prior to.
Prior to building permit.
Hmm, okay. All right.
Prior to zoning permit sign off. So it's still within your office.
I'm gonna let, I'm gonna let Mac right go. Go ahead.
Go, Nick. Quick question. Um. You brought up the uh phasing plan. Is the, is the front building intended to be occupied while the back building is being built?
You want me to answer that, Tom?
Yes, please, Rudy.
Okay. For the record, Rudy Ridberg, um, well, the, the front building is permitted. It's interior uh alterations are starting now. They'll be ready sometime in early twenty twenty five. Okay, so um, while we were delayed with uh going the H D C route. Uh, our goal is to, you know, hopefully get approval uh tonight or in the next short time, finish our drawings and start the project in the fall. And there may be some overlap at the end. There's still a discussion as to when they will, they meaning the front building will occupy. Uh. But we anticipate that the building shell will be done certainly when they're nearing their end of their construction. So um. If we have a, a full building and are just doing interior work, we think there'll be minimal, minimal disruption. We'll coordinate that with the uh, the contractor and the owners. Uh, as I said, we were hoping to have it done sooner, but we are where we're at. So um. We can provide a construction phase plan that also discusses how that works as well, as long as with the driveway.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Okay. What else? And Nick, when, um, by when the regrading?
Uh. This is a little bit more complicated. Uh, I know that the regrading has been established by the engineer. Um, through the information I was reading for the fire marshal. It seems that uh. Uh, a test was warranted just to make sure that the regrading. Prior to paving it. Works. And it's more, it's more of, you know, here's the rough grade, we're ready to go. Can he get a truck out there? You know, that kind of thing. And I think actually, uh, you know, that's during construction, but prior to C O, because I would think. Fire marshal needs to be satisfied. I'm sure he wants to do a test. I'm sure the applicant wants to do a test to make sure everything works because. In the end, if you can't get the app, the apparatus in there, it's all for moot points, right? So. But I think it's something we can discuss uh, um. If we have, decide to uh move this at all.
Well, I can comment one more time if you, if you don't mind. Uh, again, when Tom and I met. And we've met more than once or twice with, with Fire Marshal Dawson, because we have other projects that we're starting with. So we've kind of enlightened him to look at these entrances to most of these buildings. So sorry to that. But um, uh, he was happy to know that we went through the grading plan with him. He, we're gonna do a cross section. And also give him the uh, the ramp. And um, I brought a talk to the contractor and he said, tell me when it needs to get done and we'll, we'll do it at the right time prior to zoning permit.
Just don't dissuade him from keeping people safe, okay?
Because, as I say, we, we were on the site with him and told him that he was very happy that uh. Good. We were able to pull the truck on there properly and he will back out and he said, as long as he has a clean shot and so on. So we're in good shape.
All right.
Mr. Mr. Ridrig, you said you could do this prior to zoning permit?
But I'm, I mean, we can if it's necessary.
Be good.
Just, I'm just thinking. Which is dangerous, but.
Well, it's also easier. My guess is it's also easier for construction equipment. Because you're, you're, you're making a smoother access.
And so many words, yeah.
We just have to coordinate the timing with, with the work that's happening now. They do have two entrances in, an, an entrance and an exit there now. So if there was a downtime for the exit to be closed while he does this, it's not a problem.
All right, Mr. Levy.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to explore something a little bit. Uh, oh, actually, just again, because I think I asked the same question before. Uh, the.
Hopefully we won't remember.
South side of the building is, is where you have. Um. Uh, the elevator stair tower. Which should normally be your, you know, uh. Your best view. Um, so I was just curious. Why it's not on the north side of the building?
I'm trying to remember why, because you asked me this question during the, during the earlier proceedings to it. And I think part of it is the fact that uh, um, the way the, the way the layout works there. It, it's more conducive to have everything on the south side. We're also being very cognizant of the neighbor, Mr. Haskell. Uh, we met with him early on. He wanted as little um, a view of a taller, you know, towers taller there, the elevators taller there. Um, I think we also feel that it works better on the south side. We had more room to landscape against it, against the uh, the building adjacent to it. So. Um, the south side, we have uh, uh, two apartments that will still get south and well, east or west, depending on where the apartment is, they'll get a view.
So in the elevator tower, it looks like you have double hung windows and just curious.
They're there just for, they're there just to create rather than have a boring blank look on the wall. We created them, they'll be hidden from the inside. They'll be black, you know, black blanked out.
Right, no, it, it, I think it works pretty well. It's very well camouflaged. Um, but uh, I'm just curious then, mi- might you detail it a little bit differently since it's the Arfo um, and. And. You know, the fact that. You know, they could be fixed windows. Um. With a little bit more interest to them, but anyway. That's for you.
Okay. Uh, the other thing I would add is that if we move the elevator tower and the, and the stair over to the north side. Uh, that would take up uh several parking spaces. Uh, whereas because of the configuration of the lot. Uh. We can put it where it is, as uh Rudy said, we can landscape it there. And uh, retain the parking.
Uh, understood. Um, just uh, you know, I'm. Um, just curious. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else in the commission? Any comments from the public? Anybody from the public wish to speak on thirty two? Field Point Road, Field Point LLC is the application. This is for four two bedroom apartments with one designated as a moderate income dwelling unit at thirty two Field Point. No comments from the public. Does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next application. Is. Uh. Number eight. Um, who's representing the applicant?
Oh, oh, Mr. Bristol.
Mr. Bristol, yeah, yeah. All right, I suddenly remembered that he had written an email. All right, our next application is number eight. For a final re subdivision to revise the lot lines of lots zero, one and three, Sweepbrier Lane. At those addresses in the R twelve zone. Uh, worth noting that this application has been granted a variance or variances. Uh, by the uh zoning board of appeals. Seated on this application are Albin, McRae, Low. Jenkins. And Wells for Yesky. Albin, McRae, Low, Jenkins for Levy and Wells for Yesky. Um. Mr. Bristol.
Hello. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Christopher Bristol, representing the applicants, uh, Fred Decaro the third. Fred Decaro the third, uh, as trustee and also one uh Sweepbrier Lane LLC. Um, as you mentioned, uh, this is a lotline revision application um for uh three lots to, to configure the lotlines of three lots. Um, essentially to, to make um, one, uh, zero and zero Sweepbrier and three Sweepbrier. Uh, change it from a front and rear lot combination uh with a vacant lot uh being in the front and the existing house being in the back and the rear lot. Uh, changing those to normal fronting lots to have uh, um, frontage on, uh, full frontage and sweep our lane. Uh, and have it, uh, have them each uh go uh extend back into the, back to the river. Um, the primary reason for this actually is to, to uh allow more um, both zero and three uh Sweepbrier to have. Uh. For zero, more distance away from Sweepbrier, which is, which is an undersized, um, which is an undersized road, which increases the front yard setback. And also in terms of three Sweepbrier, um, the existing house, which is going to be demolished, uh, inevitably. Um, which is already uh very close to the river to allow some distance um away from the river. So but this uh lotline revision will allow both. Uh, those properties in particular to have developed more centrally located rather than be, you know, more toward the front or more toward the back toward the river. Um, as Madam Chair mentioned, uh, uh, received uh, uh, for frontage variances for all three lots from the Board of Appeals a few weeks ago. Um, so that's all set. Um. I noted in the comments, uh, these were mentioned in the briefing yesterday, but from the staff report. I did submit earlier today the sewer acknowledgement, the letter where the owner acknowledges the sewer uh, uh, department comments. Uh, so I submitted that for the record as, as well, and um. I noted that the uh engineering wanted a few things done. It says before uh filing of the map, uh, the lotline revision map. Um, in particular about removing a portion of the, the um, three Sweepbrier um. Driveway, which will end up being encroaching on the uh, the adjacent lot and also. Uh, uh, handling an encroachment of the one uh Sweepbrier Lane driveway on the adjacent lot after the lotlines are adjusted and also removal of. Uh, retaining wall on uh the, well, parcel A on the, on the proposed map. Um, there's a retaining wall on the southern side, which uh strays over into the town of uh Greenwich property. Um, to handle those, just, we, we don't have any um development plans and there's no contracts pending. Uh, I thought about handling those one of two ways, uh, because I'm hopefully, hopefully you'll find that uh, that it's not neither a subdivision or re subdivision. So. Filing of the map wouldn't have a deadline and we can file the map whenever we choose, you know, whenever we handle those aspects of the engineering. Um, or another way, I thought we could file the map now to get it out of the way and then have those being noted on the map as to be done before building permits are issued. For development or rented the three lots. I thought those were reasonable ways to go about it. I don't know how you think.
Mr. LaRoe, do you have a preference on that gets handled?
Um, yeah, Mr. Bristol, I, I believe that the case law is that it, it needs either by sale or by first permit. So if, if you, you're, I think your. Your point's well taken that if, if the commission found this to be a subdivision or re subdivision action. Uh, I think those would be the, the two trip points where that work would need to happen. Uh, and, and possibly, I, I think if it's okay with the commission, that those notes uh would work as a um placeholder for the change. I think you're also correct with the, if it's found not to be, we could handle that at the time that. Uh, again, as transfer or uh first permit, so.
So you, they would file the M I L R. With the note that, that those actions would occur prior to any development permit on the lot.
Sailor permit, I believe, is the, is the, is now the current practice.
Okie dokie, and Mr. Bristol has that language.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I, it's something I would, I would basically lift more or less substantially similar to whatever was in the, uh, the um.
But.
Engineer comments.
But we definitely would prefer, my preference is always that the M I L R get filed. Because then somebody goes, oh, there's never been any M I L R.
I, I, I fully agree. That's why I, I, my, my preference was the second option to, to have notes on the maps, you know, setting forth those, those items and then file it now just to make sure everyone's, you know, it's uh very clear um to anyone who looks.
That was on the, on the D P W conditions. Is there anything else from the commission?
Not at this time.
Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application um for a final re subdivision at zero, one and three Sweepbrier Lane in the R twelve zone? Anybody from the public, Sweetbrier Lane, kindly raise your virtual hand. Okay, seeing none? Does anyone object to closing this application at this time?
Um, I'm not so sure. I, I have some.
Oh.
Thoughts.
Oh, okay. So you weren't done commenting. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm, I'm concerned about the redevelopment of this. Uh, I'm, I'm concerned about the redevelopment of this property.
Okay.
I, I don't, there's. Um. Right now, they're just doing a lot revision, correct?
Correct.
Um, correct, and if you wish, we can always ask that this come to us for development.
Uh, well, we certainly do. Um, I'm concerned about, uh, proximity to the river. Uh, and. Uh, of the overdevelopment of the site, so. Um. So those are my concerns.
Well, I, I, I mean, just to respond to that, I would say that we do have three existing lots now and, you know, we're ending up with three, so we're not, you know, we're not creating any additional lots. And all, I, I suspect all three of these lots, uh, when developed, they're going to have to go before wetlands as well.
You are so correct, except for the fact that you are re, uh, that you are, uh. 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 Creating new lot lines, which will mean that you'll have to do quite a bit of manipulation to the. Um, to the site, uh, which is what I'm concerned about.
I, what I would say is that I think with a front and rear lot combination, when you have the rear lot that is, does much closer and much, um, uh, not quite as wide. Toward the river, this actually expands that area and allow, it gives us much more breathing room to have some distance between, um, any future development in the river.
Right, uh, but I don't know what your, uh, development plans will be, except for the fact that because of this. Lot line revision. Uh, they'll, it, it, uh, looks, it looks as though what you'll need to do is. A lot of site manipulation to, to redevelop it, and that's what I'm very concerned about.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I, I, I don't know how much will need to be developed, you know, how much site disturbance will be needed. Again, we don't have, there's no specific plans. Um, and, um. Uh, again, wha- what I would say is that, that, that under existing conditions with the rear lot in particular, which ends up, um. Having a lot less room back there, um. That it gives us much, it gives us much more options. If you look at the building envelopes too, you know, if, under the, um, under the existing. Front and rear lot combination, the, the envelope, building envelopes are, are pretty tight when it comes to particular, well, both of them actually, when you have the front rear lot combination. Um, part, if you look at, um. Uh, it's a, a good land records map seven nine four four, uh, it's part of the, uh, part of the record. Um, shows what the existing front and rear lots are, and if those building envelopes are, are much trickier than the, than the ones that we're creating.
Okay, so, um, Mick, Nick, before you go, let me just, before you start, let me just ask Patrick something. Patrick, a solution for this. Well, um, the conservation comments indicate that this is going to go to wetlands who are. A far better control than we are on. Hmm, grading, overdevelopment and stuff like that. Could we in. Approving or whatever this lot line, whatever it is, or subdivision, could we say? That staff may elevate it to the commission, the development plan to commission for review. Based on what has happening, what happens with wetlands. So. If it goes before wetlands and every concern that Mr. Levy has raised about how close are you to the river? Um, what is, what's the regrading, what, uh, things that are outside of the wetlands review area? Um, if you guys have a concern, you kick it up, up to us. Otherwise, if you think wetlands has addressed enough of these, you let it ride. Could we do it that way?
Um, I, we, we could, I, I think, I think the, probably the way I would say it is if.
Just kick it up to us.
Staff to see the de- development plans and if we don't think that the comments are being addressed. We will share that with you and we can.
Yes.
Have a meeting about.
I would, I would like to, uh, to have. Um. Um, I would like to have you present it to us one way or the other.
Okay.
Okay, well.
I would prefer, i- if Mr. Levy, if it's okay with you, I'd prefer for that to happen after the wetlands decisions are made, if that's okay.
Absolutely, because wetlands trumps us, so it should go. Okay, Mr. McRae.
Uh, I was going to say the exact same thing you did.
Okay, cool. All right, Madam Jenkins.
Um, a third voice in favor of seeing this.
Okay, so, so we're just going to see it after wetlands. I think that's the take. Um, Levy feels strongly.
That one as well, so.
I mean, he's not seated, but he feels strongly and we haven't voted on it yet. What, did you just call a fly?
I did. Feeling very.
All right, so, um, we'll just see it. Because until we have done something about the repair and setbacks, which is really where Mr. Levy's going, let's take a look at this.
So, so no matter what, you want to see it?
Yeah, I think.
Or do you want to, you want to have staff take a peek and if it's, you know, relatively okay and well, it's as good with it?
I'd much prefer to go the staff route and then elevate it if necessary.
Please, you just don't like us. Um, Mary, um, what do you want to do?
I would actually like to see it.
Okay, Le- Levy and Jenkins want to see it, so we'll see it. Um, Wells is struggling to unmute, go.
Thank you.
I'm seated, I believe, and I would like to see it as well.
Perfect, we have consensus and.
Overwhelming majority.
Hopefully by then, um, as we discussed, conservation does have our draft. Um, zoning regulations for repairing setbacks and hopefully by then they'll have the staff to have reviewed it. All right, okay, so that's a condition of, of whatever we do, Mr. McRae. Does anybody have any further comments?
I would just add that the expectation is that there's, this may be a while, right?
This may be a while, so everybody has to stay on the commission.
That was not, that was not my point, but I just don't.
That was what you meant.
No, I just don't want to be under the impression that this is going to come back before.
No, he told us, he doesn't even know when he's gonna, when he's gonna get rid of.
Five years down the road, on, on your busiest night, you're going to be wondering why you're seeing this, these. Very modest developments and.
Yeah.
The valid point, Mr. Bristol, but not the one I was trying to make, but I just wanted to make sure, we, we know, we all understand.
Patrick, no canvassing the commission on this, okay? Let's say no.
All right, okay.
We have to make sure that Mr. Wells and, uh, Ms. Jenkins actually stay on forever, because when it does come back in like twenty years. You'll, you'll have to look at it.
And somebody has to tell Jones, who by the way is in Australia.
Yikes.
Yeah, she's having a great time. She was in Sydney yesterday. She said, sorry, she couldn't join us. Okay.
It's cold there.
It's winter, yeah.
Are you going to bring up a housekeeping item now?
No, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna close this. Okay, so with that, um, seeing no further comment from the commission. Okay, everybody hold your peace now. Seeing no further comment from the commission, this application is hereby closed.
Thank you.
And with that, Mr. Brazili, time to say goodbye.
And time for dinner.
And time for dinner. We'll come back.
What's my housekeeping, uh, prompt?
Yes, oh.
Thank you.
That's not housekeeping, that's fooding. Housekeeping, I was like, what housekeeping? Mr. Brazili, we'll see you soon. And we're gonna, we're gonna go eat.
And I will be signing off for the evening.
Okay.
And I wish everyone a good night.
So everybody else has to come back, okay, because there's only five of us left.
There's attrition tonight.
Yes, okay.
Nope, muted.
Yeah, I had turned off the recording. Um, seven eight, seven thirty-eight, oh, seven forty.
Seven forty, thank you.
Seven forty, see you at seven forty. Waiting for Levy. Mm, chocolate. Important sources.
Was that a statement or a question, Madam Chair?
Important source of valuable nutrients. Especially with dark chocolate. Especially the dark chocolate. Which also pairs well with certain beverages, but, you know, we can't have those now. No, we can't have those now. Okay, we're all here. This is it. We're down to the, to the bare bones, so to speak. Okay, so it's our next application. It's going to only be twenty minutes long and it's a pre-app review. Uh, for the Chico and Sons at twenty-one Glenville Street. Uh, to make some changes to the, how we rezoned it and also to the building. And it'll be coming into us, so go, Mr. Hagney.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Uh, a- as you said, this is for the, uh, the Chico and Sons, uh. Supermarket where Stop and Shop, uh, was up until about a year ago. And, uh, this is a good place to start. Uh, last year, we came to you and said, uh, we can't find a tenant for this space. Because no one will take a supermarket that doesn't have enough parking. And so we rezoned portion of what was RA one to the LBR two. Uh, so that we could add additional parking. We ended up with a hundred and seventy parking spaces. We had had started with a hundred and fourteen. And, um. Uh, we had a somewhat unusual, uh, uh, configuration of the parking because. Uh, we didn't know quite what size truck would be used for deliveries. We had heard from a couple of, uh. Supermarket chains what size they would want, and we had to be able to work within that. Uh, that, that was turning radio to, to get the, uh, the trucks in and out of the site. Um, if we can go to a slide five, please, Pat. Or Tracy. Uh, so, uh, at the briefing yesterday, question came up as to whether, uh, what was the difference between what was approved? Uh, last year and what we're proposing now. And so that's on this screen. Uh, the blue is, uh, what you approved last year. And the red is what we're proposing as part of the, uh, the Chico's, uh, supermarket. A few other things that are noted here, what's shaded in around the existing building. Uh, are some additions, uh, mainly for refrigeration and for an enclosed. Uh, a, uh, loading dock and, uh, refuse container. Uh, it provides for two entrances, one, the existing entrance in the front of the building. Uh, and then a rear entrance, so we can take advantage of all this nice parking, uh, in, in the rear. Um, we've also been able to work out, uh, with a, uh, turning radius, which, uh, makes for a much. More uniform parking layout than what we had before. Uh, it does require us to ask for a rezoning of a portion of the, uh. Of the RA one, it's approximately ninety-six hundred square feet that we would need to add to the, uh. Uh, to the RA, to the, uh, LBR two. Uh, roughly point two, three acres. It changes the, uh, LBR two from. Four point one three to four point three five acres and reduces the RA one to just below. Uh, two acres. Um. The, uh, rather than going through the rest of the numbers, why don't we go, uh, through the rest of the slides and. Uh, so, uh, this is a, a series of photographs that our architect provided. Uh, you can see that the rear of the property is, is not all that attractive. The side isn't all that great either. Uh, and of course, uh, as part of this, uh, there would be additions to the, uh, to the side, to the front and, uh, to the rear. Uh, if we can go to the next one, please. So, uh, this is the architectural site plan. Uh, there'll be an addition, addition on the. Uh, west side or left side of the building, uh, and in the front, uh, that's for, uh, refrigeration. There will also be landscaping on the, uh, the west side or left side. Uh, the, uh, loading dock and storage and refuse will be, uh. On the, what's on the top of the building or the north side. Uh, and then to the right of that would be a, uh, entrance plaza with a new, uh, rear entrance. Uh, to, again, take advantage of that, uh, that parking. Uh, if we can go to the next one, please. Uh, this shows the, uh, entrances and the, uh, the front and rear. And also, uh, highlighted darker shade, the, uh, additions that would go on the, uh, front. Uh, side and, uh, rear of the space. And, and also chose the, the layout of the, uh, the supermarket itself and, and the checkout, uh, counters. If we can go to the next one, please. Uh, this is, uh, the proposed entrance, uh, to the rear, uh, with the, uh. Uh, plaza, uh, to enter, uh, it has the clock tower. Uh, which is a, uh, signature element of the Chico stores. And we would have one for the front entrance and one for the rear entrance. Uh, they are, uh, at the, uh, height. Uh, permit, permitted in the zone of thirty-five feet. Uh, over to the right, you can also see there'll be a, uh, storage and mechanical space. Uh, above the, um, the loading dock area, uh, that would be added. Uh, roughly, we're adding, uh, around, uh, seven thousand square feet, uh, to the building. Uh, with all of the additions, including the, the loading dock. Uh, if we can go to the next one, please. And here we have, uh, three, uh, perspectives and renderings, uh, one on the upper left. Being the, uh, entrance into the, uh, front of the building, uh, facing Glenville Street. Uh, the rear again, uh, uh, with the parking. And then, uh, a bird's eye view of the rear of the building, uh, showing the, uh. Added loading dock, the landscaping associated with that, uh, and the, the new entrance. If we can go to the next one, please. Uh, this shows the landscaping that's proposed on the, uh, side and, uh, in the rear. Uh, as also, and also in the front, uh, and the, uh, the two entrances. Uh, with their, uh, signature, uh, clock towers. And the next one is a blow up of those, which shows the vestibule and, uh, entrance. Uh, that are, uh. Added to the, uh, s- space. The, the front entrance, uh, will really just use the, uh, existing square footage and. There's about, uh, three hundred and. Uh, I think it's three hundred and thirty-six square feet that's used for the, uh, added to the rear entrance. Uh, and the next one is, uh, our last architectural, it shows the roof plan. Shows the, the two, uh, clock tower entrances, uh, and the, uh, uh, new roof over the, uh. Um, uh, loading dock and refuse areas. Um, and so that, that's what we're looking to do. Uh, we end up with about a hundred and eighty-three parking spaces versus the hundred. Seventy that you approved last time along with ten, uh. Uh, handicap spaces, uh, one for every, uh, twenty-five spaces on the property. Uh, we are conforming as the lot area. Uh, lot coverage rather of, uh, sixty-nine percent, seventy-five percent is in the zone. And, uh, building coverage. And building coverage of 19%, whereas 30% is required. FAR will be at just about at a point 19. And of course, in the LBR 2.5 is permitted. So well within all of those criteria. What we will come to you with is an application to rezone the 9,500 square feet from RA1 to the LBR2. And then a site plan and special permit. At the same time, we're over 150,000 cubic feet also. Because this is a supermarket, I think our regulations define a supermarket as a store, grocery store greater than 4,000 square feet. Probably a number that could be updated, given the size of supermarkets today. And also we would bring this to ARC for their review and comment. So we are very pleased to be able to bring this to you. I, I can now go to parties and, and say, yes, the Chico's is moving here rather than, I don't know who's going to be occupying the space. So I'm, I'm very pleased to be able to do that. And we're, we're excited to be able to have them be a part of the community. It's a family owned business. And I think everyone in Glenville will be, and even us in Byram, will be very pleased that they are, are setting up a store here. And I'll defer my 10 minutes to the commission for any comments or questions.
Commission, Mary.
Yes, will there be any regrading or excavation because of the extension of the parking lot?
Yes, there, there will be some on the westerly side, the part that was previously rezoned. It we had some grading there before. There'll be a little bit more now. The area that we are looking to rezone is relatively flat. So there won't be an awful lot of more grading there, but there will be on the west side.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wells.
Yeah, most likely when you come back, Mr. Hagney, but would be interested. You know, I'm looking at page eight of your presentation, the loading dock, which is covered. And you're gonna have a fairly large truck backing in there. And then you're gonna have obviously people loading off of it. But what's gonna happen to the fumes coming out of the truck? Do you gonna have adequate ventilation? And how do you protect the health of the people working there unloading the truck in an enclosed space? I know that, I know the truck's gonna turn off when it stops, but you know, the fumes, diesel fumes are gonna be coming in there. How are you gonna keep your workers safe when you come back?
Thank you. Mr. Matt Gruff.
Mr. Hagney, for the rezone. Thank you for the A and B comparison. You make that an honest to God thing because that's actually very critical for us to see. What did we do? What are, what do we, and what the ask is? Truck moving. You've got a large bay, I guess to accommodate a tandem truck. We'd really love to see how the guys can try to get in there. You're driving over a multiple curb and patio to get into the thing. That's kind of an important part. Comprehensive landscape plan. One of the questions I need to have answered actually is which entry the operator would like the tenants to use? You've got all the, a lot of effort to get parking in the back. The patio in the back, it seems like the nicer entrance. But both entrances, engine towers are the same. I know. Is there something that's gonna, gonna, in a sense, force me to go to the back to use that? Or will I just, as logic, you know, predicts, drive up to the front of the building and go into that entrance? So again, like we had said in another application, talking about actually how to get people to where you want them to be. Conveniently and accurately.
You know, I haven't talked to John De Chico all that much about this particular issue. But I, I have to say, when we were speaking with other restaurant, excuse me, supermarket chains. Access to part, to usable parking was a big deal. No one wanted to talk to us until you gave us the increased parking availability last year. And and this new design of the parking in the rear, I think is going to facilitate much more of that being used than before. And of course, with a terrific supermarket, the rest of the stores will be busier. And they will use primarily that front parking. So it, it will depend at when, you know, when you get up there to go grocery shopping. And you see that there are others, if you go at noon on a Saturday, you may find that the front spaces are occupied and you may go to the rear. If you go at eight o'clock on a Sunday like I do. Then there's probably parking right front. You might use that entrance because it's closer by. So I, I think it's really gonna depend on the time of day and, and, and what other stores are active at that time.
I think I, that's David. Oh, what are the stores? You've got the four that exist. And now the four that are new. So that front parking lot is gonna be quite busy. So I think actually having a, you know, a deep thought on, on maybe your primary entrance is the rear and how do I get, how do I get most of the people that are coming to my store to that point? That way you're not encumbering any of the parking. You're having people drive around and look, looking for a space in the front. Just, you know, here, come to it, come to the back door. It's wide open. We've got all kinds of great parking back here.
It has a nice plaza. Yeah, it's new. It, not that the front parking lot isn't new now too, but.
Okay, now on the, the architectural site. It looked like you were gonna be carving out more space around the existing four retail spaces in the, the west side, east side of the building. That's not the case. I'm just looking, it just looks like it's color coded, but that's all gonna remain the same. There's really nothing being excavated or anything to get back there.
Correct. We, we had looked at that at one point to provide essentially circulation around the entire building. It requires a great deal of rock removal there and also a fair amount of loss of parking spaces in the front. And because of that, we really didn't pursue that very much.
Got it. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, I'm, you know me, I'm looking for your landscaping plan and that it retain a nice kind of neighborhood feel to it. I'd like to see it before it goes to ARC. Oh, we just lost Levy.
Trees in the spaces.
Trees in the spaces. Now, when you redo the parking, please pay attention to how our landscape regulations are written. And not how Mr. DeAndrea would have liked to have seen them written. You can tell him we said that. He kept arguing with us. We're like, no, we wrote them. So yeah, to keep it neighborhoody, to keep it drawing people in. And to see what you're gonna do, just the layout again formally before we send you to ARC. I'm hoping that they like the, the new look of the building. And we'll see. Okay.
Terrific.
All right.
Do you wanna ask for neighbor comment?
Yeah, that's a good idea. I was forgetting. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on De Chico and Sons? This is the application for the supermarket in Glenville at 21 Glenville. Please raise your virtual hand. Okay. All right, okay.
They're all working on their shopping lists.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been a little slower. We we don't have, we only have 30 people here tonight. Our next application is Pete, Peter Wells.
Thank you.
Oh, it's not you anymore? I just thought we'd leave, Mr. Hagney.
I'm, I'm done.
You're done. Oh, I did know it wasn't you because I think it is the applicant himself. Mr. Wells, if you would raise your hand. All right, so I've got two Wellses, not one. So I'm bringing them both in.
Three, if you include the extra E.
All right, Mr. Wells, if you would unmute, and I take it you are to Mr. Wellses.
Yeah, I'm Peter Wells. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can. And then Doug Wells is with you.
He's on a different computer. I'm not sure if he's able to get in as well.
Okay, he's with you. He's in.
Okay.
All right. Hello, Mr. Wells. This is an application, a pre-application review for 187 Weaver Street in the RA Zone. For proposed conversion of an existing space above a detached garage into an accessory dwelling unit on a point four six acre property. And if you would proceed, Miss, Miss, Mr. Wells. Douglas Wells, if you would just unmute so you're ready to go.
Well, I can start if all these figuring it out. Yeah, so we, I purchased the house in 2019. We have detached garage that's, you know, essentially good to go as a, an ADU unit. And you know, there's a few things that are non-compliant. So I guess we're looking to see if those can be overlooked. In order to kind of step, follow the next steps in order to get this approved.
Okay, so your questions were about the non, the, the things where you're non-conforming. So the two big issues are that the lot is half an acre, a little less than half an acre in a one acre zone. And that your garage building doesn't meet the setbacks for either the RA1 or the R20, which is the next zone below it. It, yeah, it would be deficient in the setback.
Yeah, I don't know what the R20 setbacks are. I didn't know that was relevant, but um.
Oh, the reason it's relevant, and, and this is something for you to think about before I finally, after 16 years of asking, get my way. Go ahead, smile, Patrick. So there's a regulation that if you have a lot that's non-conforming. You are allowed to use the setbacks of the next zone down. And that is, that regulation is six dash nine. You might still be able to use it after we revise it because the revision we wanna make is only for oversized lots. Not being able to use that, that an oversized lot would have to conform in the setbacks.
Understood, yeah.
But so you can use the setbacks of the R20 and that's what's relevant. So if you were to add to your house. As long as you're within your FAR for your zone. You, you can go down to the setbacks of the R20 because you're in a, you're in a non-conforming lot. So, so as you think about what you're doing, because you're also doing you're also doing work on the house, right? Or you're not, you're only gonna do the conversion.
We're not doing a single thing.
So as you think about the future, that's something that's an option for you. So the question for us is how we feel about adding a second dwelling unit on a lot that just for the sake of discussion is roughly half the size of what is required for the zone. Commissioners, would you comment? All of you?
I think it's actually less than half, less than that.
Point four six. I know I was just rounding.
It's, it's like 41,000 square feet less.
Yeah.
So I think kind of a comprehensive site plan that really show how this looks and works. Because it's so small would be
So there, there is a survey package that I provided.
Yeah, but that doesn't tell me anything. It's, it's a, it's an A2 survey. It just shows where the, the footprints are. But I, you know, something that shows the parking, that kind of thing. I think actually, looking at the FAR, because it's the FAR for a one acre zone. I think it'd be critical to understand what's going on in the building and then the ADU to make sure that that actually all still works.
So the test itself is, is more than the FAR allows. So it's, it's not conforming with regard to the FAR as well. So if you add the garage and, and the ADU into that space, you know, it would be further, you know, further square footage that's beyond the FAR allowance.
And how did you know that? Because we weren't sure from the data you gave us that your FAR was not compliant.
So my house, I think it's 2,900 or so.
But yeah, so you weren't, you were, so that's the thing. That's we went through this yesterday and your house is, that's the finished area. And that is different from the floor area that we count for the FAR. So we don't actually know if you're non-compliant or not with FAR. If you were over FAR, we would absolutely be very resistant to giving you the ADU if you were already over FAR to add FAR because you would need a variance at that point. But we're not clear you are. Patrick wasn't clear and he's, and neither was Nick, and they're the ones who do a great job with that.
Mr. Wells, that, that number, where did you actually get the number from?
The tax card is 2933 of finished, finished space.
Correct.
It, it says 2793.
Yeah, there's a, there's a transposition of numbers somewhere.
It's 2973 or something.
I think the tax card says, my memory is that the tax card says 2,900.
I, I think it is 2793.
And I think someone switched, whichever one. I'm not clear that, so he got it off of the tax card. And what Patrick was saying to us yesterday is that that tax card number is a not, oh, is generally not a valid predictor of what your actual floor area is for the floor area ratio. So we don't know. If you were already over your FAR, we would not want you to add a dwelling unit. Because that we didn't put into our regulation as I remember, Patrick. Are you okay, Patrick?
Yeah, no, I, I think the question would be, is if, if the work being done would add floor area, right? But I'm sure I think it's the question of, are we non-conforming now? And are we utilizing the space in the buildings? Or is it increasing that number? I think is what, right, am I, am I?
Yeah, we're saying the same thing. So if he, if they finish the space, which I'm assuming is unfinished space right now over the garage.
It's already finished.
And it's already counted in your total.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's essentially a, a full living space right now that's separate. And that seems, the, the tax card for the, there's a separate tax card for the garage, you know, unit. Has no information on it. And you know, you walk in, it looks like a rental apartment, like everything is, is already there. And it appears to have been that way since the early 80s or late 70s.
So you, what you essentially probably have is that somebody had it as an illegal dwelling unit and you're trying to legalize it.
Again, I don't know the previous owners were here for about 30 years. And yeah, and with, with the change, I'm now looking to legalize that space.
Yeah.
So there's not a single hammer being lifted. There's no change at all.
So that's a different way of putting it, Patrick, because he may be he may be legalizing what was a, what's an existing zoning violation, in which case we may be able to see if that's already there, are we able to see our way to it better?
Right. And I, I think Mr. Wells has already gone down that path to see if there's a CO for the space or not. And, and I think you have not been successful in, in, you know, if, if finding out the date of the conversion or whatever was done in that upper floor of that garage, right, Mr. Wells?
So you have an existing not illegal unit, which you're looking to legalize. And I, since it has no CO, you would have to get it a CO, which is what you're planning on doing, right?
Right, correct.
You have to get it a certificate. So you may be better off doing that as your tax than you know, I was thinking you were finishing the space and adding FAR and adding finished space. And that you were, they'd already all exist. Well, Mary was suspicious yesterday that it probably already existed. There was something you had seen, right, Mary? And she was saying, I think it's already there.
I think part of the problem is that the numbers are kind of all over the place.
Yes.
Tax, the tax card, and, and I think I read it correctly, says that the garage has three finished rooms, including a bathroom. And is 529 FAR. So you know, I think that, that at least indicates it's finished and it actually exceeds what you were proposing, which I believe is 480. So there, there may be some. So there may be some, some possibility there. Again, the ultimate issue, not to interrupt, but the ultimate issue is your FAR, your max FAR is 2705. So again, you're, as long as you are within the existing degree of non-conformity and other things are being satisfied, in other words, the other part, the satisfaction is you have to do a special permit to the extent we're approving something that's non-conforming. And at least there's, there is some wiggle room there, some possible. But again, the numbers don't work, the numbers don't match.
No, I'm well aware that the, you know, the FAR numbers are well short. I mean, I think the process is, we sort of go for the variance, and because things are 100% in place already, then we see if we can, you know, go through the approval or not.
So, so my question is still to Patrick, can we do this as a correction of a zoning violation instead?
Well, can we do it as a correction of a zoning violation? Well, I think the facts would have to bear that out. So again, if the, if the unit was finished with a bathroom, I'm sorry, with a kitchen, I shouldn't say with a bathroom, you could do a bathroom. With, if it was finished with a kitchen at a time when the regulations would not preclude that, and it's been established and kept since that time, then it would possibly not be a violation. My understanding is, we don't have evidence to support that, but again, I don't know if that search is done. So that would be, we certainly could, if that was the case, say, this existed at a time when it was legal. They're here now, they want to create the ADU for zoning approval, and we could approve it that way. But if it is not, and, and again, the regulations talk about non-conforming lots and the commission's intervention or review of those before one is approved, then, you know, I don't know how the commission is intending to treat those. Is it going to be a application that you would approve, or do you think this is something that needs a variance to get?
So what I'm trying to get to is, if the unit already exists, can we just legalize it?
Well, again, the space, I think, exists, and that is, you know, not in dispute. It's whether or not the kitchen in there was created at a time when that was not a prohibited activity.
When was that?
I don't even think there is a kitchen. I don't believe.
There is on the floor.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
There's a kitchen and a bathroom.
Kitchen, a bathroom, bedroom, and again, you can have bathrooms in outbuildings, it's, it's the kitchen that is the trip that to establishing a dwelling unit. I'd have to look back at the date for when we, we created that.
It was a long time ago.
It was, but I'm not, I don't want to say 81 and find out that the building was built in 79.
I would lean to trying to do a little research to establish that we're legalizing something.
We have to be careful about that, because actually, when we say legalize something, it's only a zoning issue.
Yeah, and he's got to get a CO.
The code for actually having a residence like this is, a building code is actually much more strict and difficult to resolve.
Oh, yeah, 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 but he's got to get a CO. That would be absolutely, and.
A CO prior for us, prior to us legalizing it.
Or we find out what's missing. He gets an inspection, we find out what he's missing for CO, and it's a condition of approval. That he has to get it, I mean, it has to get a CO. We can't, I mean, no greater nightmare that we have than that somebody gets hurt because they're living in something that has, you know, crappy wiring and has a fire.
The other issue is that we're legalizing a non-conforming FAR issue?
It's.
Well, not necessarily, Mr. McRae, because again, if the garage was built, regardless of having the kitchen with permits, then it's a permitted, you know, it exists. So it's not, it's not so much the volume or the square footage of the, of the combined buildings as it is the existence of the kitchen in the outbuilding that is the, the issue.
So it's actually, it all keys on actually CO of the building, the garage building itself.
Exactly. And that CO, given when that garage building was probably went up, because that garage itself, prior to it being fixed on the second floor, looks to be an old structure, and then somebody built more, because the setbacks are so, are so minimal, and that's what everybody did in the old days. They pushed those garage buildings in the back. So I think we're saying, pursue that avenue first. I know you have legal and real estate resources in your family. Looking at one of them. So and your real estate resource is missing in action at the moment, but.
I'm sure she's somewhere around.
Yeah, you can tap those and just see if you, if you have something that already exists and it's a violation, and all, and we're just saying, okay, look, it's already there, so bring it up to code, make sure it's safe, and they're in exchange, and we've done these before with dwelling units. That would be your one option. Your other option, depending on your FAR situation, is that you would have to go to get a variance. Because for the FAR, he does need a variance even on the ADU reg, right, Patrick? I'm not misremembering.
Uh, no, again, the, the, well, the very, again, that, I think that is up to the commission to determine how to.
I don't think we left FAR as one of the things that we could waive.
We said in the lot that is non-conforming with, with the underlying zoning, and that, that is.
What included the FARs, what you're thinking? Okay, so you wouldn't necessarily need a variance, and you would come back to us and say, look, I'm not doing this as a correction. I would get Patrick to help you, Patrick or Tracy, just to find you the easiest path. You heard the resistance in Mr. McRae's voice. We, we are trying not to do this in lots that are way undersized, because there was a lot of resistance when we first considered this. But we do want to do ADUs. So we're trying to find a path, but there was resistance to the density in town, so for us to thread the needle is helpful. Ms. Jenkins, you had your hand up for a moment?
Yeah.
And then also Levy did.
Yeah, the, the most recent change to the definition of dwelling unit is 2001.
Yeah, I found the same, Mrs. Jenkins, but it also says in the notes on the amendment that it's a new definition of, or of kitchen, so I have to go back now and look at the older versions and make sure that kitchen was.
I can tell you is that I think the kitchen thing has been at least since 2005. That's the one thing.
It's definitely since 01, that's without a doubt.
Yeah.
But how it existed before that would be something I have to go.
So I would, I don't know how much you've talked to Patrick and Tracy about this, but they'll, they can help you find a path, pass with it. We will be internally resistant, Nick, how would you have put that? We will be resistant, all of us are, to things that are on small lots, don't have the setbacks. It's, for us, it's not a great argument to say the adjoining lots are hard to develop, and they, in those corners where there are deficient setbacks. Because what we've seen, if we could show you some of our applications, people completely flatten and fill every lot that you think could not be developed. So you got to assume that there is a point at which somebody might end up being right up against you, or at least closer. So I would go with the other options that are easier.
Okay.
Anything else in the commission? Tracy? Patrick?
No, I think, yeah, I think we just need to, if not exhaust the history of the development of the lot, of the, the building, and then we can take the steps from there.
Also, Peter Levy, you had your hand up and you dropped it. Did you want to say something? I have a feeling.
Well, I think the commissioners did a good job of dissecting this, but I think my feeling is that we do want to encourage ADUs, so and I think that we're well-prepared, the department's well-prepared to be helpful here, so it seems like there is a path, and we will try to support you.
Patrick?
Right, I'll just add, since we're here, and I don't know if you've gotten that staff, but there is a a list of, like, sort of warning steps that the building department is going to ask for investigations if they never permitted the space originally. I'm happy to send that to you guys if you don't have it, but I just want to warn, let everyone know here that there may be some investigative work that needs to happen, inspections, even if nothing has to change before a new CO is issued for the space, so.
I gave, I gave Mr. Wells that account when he came to town one day. Yep.
Yeah, I just, it, it, people get sticker shock when they find out that there's work that needs to get done, even for existing spaces, and I just want everybody to be aware of what could happen, so.
Um, Patrick, did you ever resolve the sewer connection thing?
Uh, not, uh, well, I've had positive conversations with sewer, but I don't know, I don't believe we have a policy change yet, so.
Okay, I, because one of the issues, I'm, we're just, I'm just going to be very upfront with you guys. We have been pushing back on sewer for, ever since we approved this regulation, they were requiring a separate connection for ADUs, which is not the point of an ADU. And we.
But it's the point of the sewer division. That's actually a little bit more complicated, because if you actually send an ADU through this, through another house, if the house in front gets clogged, then the ADU is clogged, so think of it from their point of view.
Yeah, yeah, no, no question, and I love our sewer department. I, they do a great job, but just saying, it gets in the way. We have someone who's been trying to do an ADU, and he doesn't want to do a separate sewer connection. So the person's been waiting while we have this dialogue, trying to, trying to find a resolution. So just putting it on the table, so you guys know, we've been working on it for, what, a year? And Patrick will occasionally call them up and say, have you had a thought about this, anything new? But they wanted a connection, and the guy didn't want to pay for it.
Well, yeah, that issue has been addressed, that specific one, but the overall policy one that we've talked about has not, so, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so stay in touch with Patrick and Tracy, because it sounds like they're helping you out.
Sounds good.
And do you have any questions for us?
No, thank you.
No, I don't think so.
All right. Okay. Thank you, both.
Thank you.
All right, and now we have one more, which is Mr. Tessie.
Two more. Now chapel?
Chapel, oh, yeah, that's right.
Chapel and then the veterinary.
I keep forgetting about the veterinary. It's on another page. All right. Well, we, that one was so much easier to answer. Okay, so Tessie's doing chapel, right?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Tessie. If you would unmute. There you go.
Yeah, there I go. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. So you didn't put your little clock up the second time.
Who, Patrick?
Yeah, I like his little clock.
Don't worry, I won't, I won't get him close. The, the application, as you discussed during your briefing session yesterday, is to convert currently non non-conforming medical office space that is in a building at one, traditionally 100 Putnam Green, now known as 500 Western Junior Highway. It is an office building built in the 1970s by the developers at the time of Putnam Green, which were the Schwartz and Shacter family, actually. The building, I believe, originally was used.
Hold up, Mr. Tessie, I'm sorry, this is supposed to be 17 Chapel. Are you here for?
I'm not 17, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can talk about that, but you have to brief me.
We're out of order, Madam Chair.
Well, he raised his hand, and I brought him right in.
Well, I didn't know, I thought he was representing.
Is 17 Chapel here? 17 Chapel.
I believe it's Mr. DeAndrea, now that I'm reading the form.
Mr. DeAndrea? All right, let's get Mr. Tessie back. I don't think Chapel is here. Mr. Tessie, raise your hand again.
Well, there may be residents who are interested in it.
Okay, 17 Chapel. Does anybody want to speak on 17 Chapel? And Tessie's hand is up, and one other. Harch?
Hold on here.
Okay, so Mr. Harch, are you representing 17 Chapel? And he's muted. If you could unmute? Okay, I'll go to the next person. That's John Tessie. Alex Roberts?
I think it's Robarts, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'll get a new prescription. He lowered his hand. Mr. Harch, Harch? Alex Robarts? All right, Alex Robarts, are you here to speak about 17 Chapel or to represent it?
Speak. I'm a, I'm an adjacent neighbor.
Neighbor.
And I was told that we could voice our opinions and follow up on specifically, in our case, we've lodged a complaint formally with the commission, and that letter should be in the docket somehow, but I don't know if I'm speaking out of turn or whether.
Hold on, I'm still trying to find the person who's speaking for the application. Harch? And also, Harch, are you here to speak for the application, or are you also a neighbor?
A neighbor.
A neighbor, so we got two neighbors. And those are the only people with their hands up, so we can't really let them speak to the person who's representing the application.
Yeah, we need to represent.
Let me, and you said it was DeAndrea?
It looks like Mr. De, or it looks like Rocco V. DeAndrea's office is representing the applicant here.
That makes sense.
Hold on, working on it.
Not sure if Mark is, I don't know who Mark is in his office either, so.
Try Len.
No, it's Mark in his office, not Len.
Len was the person that we spoke with, just FYI.
Yeah, because, yeah, but it's signed by.
I don't see any representation in the, in the waiting room here, so thank you very much.
Folks, we hate to do this to you, but if the applicant doesn't come to the meeting, we can't let you speak.
But we can't discuss the application.
We can't discuss it.
Skip this and come back to it?
Well, we can't get ahold of Tony. Let me try again. He's not picking up. Yeah, it's going to his voicemail. Okay.
All right, well.
So Mr. Harch?
Yeah, if we could just ask everybody to hang out until after Mr. Tessie.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna put you back into the group, and we're gonna try, keep trying to get ahold of whoever's representing them.
Okay.
So we're very sorry, every now and then this happens when we go more efficiently than we were planning.
Okay.
So we're gonna just bring you back. Don't go away. And now you have to listen to Mr. Tessie.
Mr. Tessie had to reintroduce himself.
You know, Mr. Tessie's going to reintroduce himself. And Mr. Harch, I'm lowering your hand. Okay. Okay, Mr. Tessie, you get to start over again.
Okay, that's just, I guess cruel and unusual punishment for those people, but it happens. Yes, I am representing the applicant. I do want to state one thing, Madam Chair, you're absolutely correct. There's a misspelling of Knight and Dale. And I own, and I own, I own that issue, me and my spell check. So I do apologize to the client for that.
You have a very strange spell check.
Um, I do. That is true.
Okay.
So the building where we are discussing is the building located at 5 Western Junior Highway, built in 1970 as an office building, originally associated, as I said earlier, with the Putnam Green Apartments that are now, I believe, called Prentice Place. The building has been used as office historically as general office until, I think it's 2018, when there was an administrative approval granted to the purchaser of the property to operate a fertility clinic with five, of the five doctors practicing at one time. The owner has since put the property on the market for, for rental. And our clients, Knight and Yale Veterinary Partners, are interested in the facility for their use. As I described in my cover, a cover letter with the application, their use is a veterinary hospital performing specialized veterinary services for, well. for uh, what we call companion animals. In other words, generally dogs, dogs and cats.
And parrots and hamsters.
Parakeets and others.
Nick, don't laugh.
Domestic, domestic variety. They do specialized surgery. They are not open during the weekends at all. And they uh, basically operate uh, between 7:30 AM and 6:30 PM Mon- Monday through Friday, except holidays. Um, they are not uh, boarding indoor or outdoor any animals. And generally, it is a day surgery situation where the animals um, are uh, operated upon and leave that evening, but there are occasions when they do, when the animals do stay over for uh, an evening or so. And there'll be one person on staff when that happens. Um, there is sufficient parking on the property uh, to meet this use. It is uh, within an area where we do have residential neighbors to the south and the in the east, but there is some space between. Um, in all in all, with this is is a classic question for the commission under special permit under section 6141B1.
Go.
Which is our obligation to convince the commission.
There you go. You can go home now.
Proposed use is not more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing use and we feel very confident, given the parameters of this operation and the any additional reasonable conditions, which I'm sure there would be of the commission, that this is a very appropriate use. It actually does serve the community itself, given the type of facility that exists, that is being proposed.
Okay, we made you a list yesterday of what we'd be looking at. Traffic nuisance, noise, parking.
Absolutely.
Um, you go through what's everything that is detrimental to a neighborhood.
Yes.
Um, entrance and exits across from residential, um, whether you're screened from the residential or that, you just go through the list and that's all the case you have to make for us, Mr. LaRoe.
We, we feel comfort, oh, go ahead, Mr. LaRoe.
No, 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 go ahead. You can answer, Mr. Tessie.
No, we feel comfortable in all those regards. Um, it's, the, the building is relatively close to West, um, West Putnam Avenue, as you know. As I said, I think it serves an individual community too, which is good. Um, but we will provide a, basically a traffic impact statement comparing the traffic for the uh, existing uh, for, what did I say? Five doctor facility to what we're proposing using an IT handbook. I think that that should suffice and I'd be very surprised we haven't done the numbers yet if if we come out negative in that regard.
Hours of operation, the turnover.
Operation, as I stated, seven during the day, al- busi- business day only. Um, no weekends, no evenings, except uh, for those animals that have to stay over. There'll be one, one, maybe two, two uh, employees.
Um, and, and we've, and the last time we approved one of these, sorry, we keep interrupting you, but you know, we're trying to keep it short. The last time we approved one of these, some of the things we were asking was where are the animals gonna be relieved? Um, dogs specifically, I don't think you need to worry about the parakeets and the hamsters, but
Yes.
I was just trying to get Nick to smile. Um, but the where are the dogs gonna be relieved? Is they're gonna be barking at the, you can find the transcript from when we approved.
I, I, I did that just to help you. That was my application.
Right, okay. So you know all the stuff we asked about.
And we, we, we thank you for having approved that and I, it's been going very well there and I don't believe you had any complaints crossing my fingers.
I haven't heard of any so far.
They operated, bo- both of these are professionals, by the way. Uh, appeared at veterinary cli- cli- clinic in Cosco. They have multiple uh, operations. So does Nightingale, so they, they all know what they're doing. And uh, they're, they'll be pleased to speak at the hearing and answer any qu- the formal hearing, speak it in and, and speak directly to you on any specific questions. Okay?
And Mr. LaRoe?
Mr. LaRoe.
Uh, Mr. Tessie actually jumped on my point. I think parking, I, I'm remembering this site now from the change to the uh, clinic that was there, whatever the last medical use was, and, and I think they were maybe for the number of professionals, maybe it was tight on parking, but um, thank you. I think that's another part that needs to be looked at and uh,
Yeah, we, yeah.
So no weekends, no nights for this business, okay?
No nights in that, uh, they, they're not doing any boarding. They don't do boarding.
Okay.
O- only if there's a need to stay over for, basically it was gonna be a relatively sedated animal that they can't release and have to
Well, um,
I think this is unique to town cuz, well, I don't, I can't think of any other of the animal hospitals that don't have some sort of you know, whatever, walk-in or end of night kind of thing, but uh, that I
Yeah, they don't do that, 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 VEG, VEG does up in Cosco. They, they have it all night. But this is specialized surgery facility. They were emergency care facility, so they are, they are different.
Okay.
Probably complement each other. In fact, they probably ship one, you know, one would go to the other depending upon it.
No, it just, it sounds
I could see that. We've actually talked about that, come to think about that with the client, that they probably, they're familiar with VEG. In, in actuality, they would probably complement each other.
Okay. Uh, you will have animals staying overnight because most of the animals that are, that are neutered or spayed are kept overnight.
Yeah, well, they indicated it would be overnight. We didn't want to hire it, but a good part can go home.
Okay, so just show us what the, I mean, obviously if you're gonna do, um, I assume you're gonna have to do uh, some kind of facade changes as well, so you would be going to ARC. But come to us first and, and let's talk about
They're not proposing any facade changes, so would be, it would be, I think they may want to put a generator in, but one may have been approved, maybe something like that. But yes, whether it's ARC and
And signage.
Work it out with staff and signage, yes.
Yep, and lighting.
Which signage actually is, is limited in a residential zone. And actually, there was a variance granted by the Board of Appeals for a little bit larger sign, so we'll, we'd be following that template.
And lighting. Don't forget lighting.
Lighting, again, is gonna be relatively minimal. They're not, I don't think they're proposing anything, but we'll let
Just all those things. But your key issue here is the 141.
Yes, I agree 100%.
And that you may get neighborhood resistance. Okay, all right.
We gave, we noticed you haven't seen anybody show up tonight. And uh,
A lot of times people don't come for the pre-op. And it's summer.
There's not much to argue. We didn't get much in Cosco, but I won't be beat up to point.
No, it's true.
We'll, we'll, we'll find out. People love dogs. Some of them do, ladies. Okay, without, thank you very much.
Alrighty, okay, thank you.
Take care.
All right, well, um, hi neighbors, once again, Alex Roberts, and um, I'm not seeing Mr. um, Harch anymore. But I'm really sorry to do this to you, but if the applicant's not here, we can't let you speak. So you're just gonna have to come back the next time and we apologize.
But we would, we would, we just can't talk about the application, that's all.
Oh, yeah, if you want to just talk to us in general, Mr. Roberts, go ahead.
No, no, Madam Chair, I would not take anything on.
No, he's just, no, he's not, but he raised his hand. Mr. Roberts? Robarts? Did you want to say something you need to unmute?
Right, um, sorry, yes, it's just a uh, a procedure question, thanks. Um, so would this then mean that we would be
Re- notice it. We have to reissue another agenda. We'll send out the agenda again. They'll come back. I tried to call them three times while, you know, while you were here.
Right.
So we're really sorry, um, uh, we don't mind going to bed earlier, but um, we're sorry that you had to listen to us for four and a half hours.
No, no worries. I, I just wanted to make sure because I know that a- another neighbor, and I think there's still a third neighbor, where we've really been talking about this, uh, and I know we're in the pre-application phase as well, so very much looking forward to having the chance um, to, to discuss this in front of the commission. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you.
Is this safe to assume that the next date is in fact in a month's time, or I guess I just
Two weeks. Look in two weeks. Look for our next agenda in two weeks cuz there's a good chance we'll have room on that agenda.
Very good, very good. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
So long.
All right. Uh, disabled talking. Okidoki. And Mr. Harch has his hand up as well. I feel bad because they, yes, sir, or if you would unmute, if you want to speak. Can you unmute? All right, I'm not having any luck with that. Okay.
Again, Madam Chair, the next meeting is the ninth. Likely this is gonna be on unless the applicant tells us that that's not good for them. And we will make sure that we have confirmation before we post the agenda.
Okay, and with that, shall we go to decision mode? Um, we have two items. Field Point? What?
Four.
I'm sorry.
I've got Mason.
You've got Mason, Field Point and Putnam.
And Sweetbrier?
And Sweetbrier. I take it back. And PIFs.
Do we have PIFs?
Yeah, because we said we got all the conditions. That's what you were doing while you were recused.
I thought Sweetbrier was the one that we didn't close.
Three, six, seven, eight, I have.
Yeah, three.
Well, let's, let's start at uh, at uh, on Mason Street and see how far we can get.
Okay, um, uh, all right, um, okay, so I thought we did close, um, PIFs.
I don't remember, that's what
Yeah, no, we, that's the one where we got all the numbers at the end and we said 2% up and not down and it's all of that. So let me see if I can
Closed it.
Yeah, we closed it.
Okay, so
I know.
You want to do it or she did, you want me to?
You know, you start, start with Sweetbrier.
Okay.
And go backwards from Sweetbrier.
Oh, and I'm gonna Sweetbrier wasn't closed.
Yes, it was.
No, it didn't.
Yeah, we closed it and said it has to come back to us to do the development.
I thought, oh, never mind.
Never mind. Yes, we closed it and said it's gonna come back to us and do the development. And then we got him, then we talked about when the date you're gonna do the DPW conditions. And um, yeah.
Yes, you closed Sweetbrier.
Yeah, we did. It's okay.
So, 013, Sweetbrier Lane, application PLPZ 2024 123 for final re-subdivision. Applicants requesting a lot line revision of three existing lots into three parcels located in the R12 zone. Commission finds that the proposal is neither subdivision or re-subdivision. There's only Board of Appeals, granted a variance of lot furnished for all three proposed lots at their 6524 meeting under application PLZE 2024 016. Conservation issue comments dated uh, 080824 indicating recommendations to the plan. Uh, sewer issue comments on 5824 requesting applicants submit a uh, signed letter acknowledging uh, the receipt of their P&amp;Z comments, engineering issue comments on 5824 hitting an approval of a lot line revision with comments. And wetlands issued a permanent needs questionnaire in 32724 indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to approve with the following comments prior to map filing for conservation comments, the applicant shall provide, you know, for one. Uh, prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall address that sending expired sewer permits as outlined in the sewer division comments dated 5824 per sewer division comment, the applicant has submitted a signed letter acknowledging receipt of their comments dated 62424. And the applicant should repair record sheet in a form suitable for the chairman of planning and zoning to sign and file the Grinch land records. And the four bullet points of the DPW 5824 comments memo shall be added to the recorded map and a note, um, and a note that states issues to be resolved prior to the first sale uh, or building permit. And prior to the improvement of each lot, the proposed developments shall return to the planning and zoning provision for review. And the applicant shall address any and all outstanding staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Wells has seconded. And I think we have five people.
You do.
And that's gonna be uh, Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levy? Mr. Levy?
Muted. Aye.
Um, Mr. Wells?
Aye.
And Madam Jenkins?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes 5-0. And we go to
32 Field Point Road, PLPZ 2024 057, final site plan, special permit. Advocate seeking approval to construct an additional detached building on site to contain four two-bedroom apartments. Three mark, three market rate units and one designated as moderate income dwelling under uh, section 6110 with parking underneath their roof deck and other side of improvements on a 20,000 4762 square foot property located in CGB and CGIO zones. Whereas the applicant has, uh, applicant has been submitted per section 6110 of the BZR, the project has made use of the 6110 incentives for FAR proposing 6.6 where 0.3 is allowed and coverage proposing 0.3 where 0.2 is allowed. Uh, the commission finds that uh, DPW engineering issue comments on 6524 indicating resubmital prior to zoning building permit. ARC issue comments, uh, 6524 indicating approval, approved with comments. EMAC issued comments on 6624 with recommendations to the plan. Sewer division issued comments on 31324 requesting the applicant submit a signed letter acknowledging receipt of P&amp;Z comments. And wetlands issued a permanent needs questionnaire dated uh, 2924 indicating no action required. Therefore, motion approved the application noted in the following. Prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall address ARC comments. Uh, 1, 2, 3, 4, from their last minutes. Uh, the applicant shall return to the ARC for at 50% construction documents uh, to review final details and materials. Per sewer division comment applicant has submitted a signed letter acknowledging receipt of their P&amp;Z comments dated 31424. Prior to zoning permit, the final housing authority affordability plan shall be reviewed by town of Grinch law department and P&amp;Z staff and recorded on Grinch land records. And prior to zoning permit, the construction phasing plan indicating soil and erosion control, site fencing, job site parking, access and building occupancies. All soil and erosion controls shall be in accordance with Connecticut DEP March 30th, 24 guidelines for soil erosion and soil controls. Uh, prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall provide final total FAR worksheets for the uh, for the whole site. Um, and prior to zoning permit, um, the final driveway paving uh, shall be tested with the appropriate fire department apparatus uh, to verify the new driveway grade is not a hindrance to site access and that maneuvering through the site is acceptable with Grinch Fire Department. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Um, Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes 5-0 and we go to do the next one. Mason?
Uh, hold on a second.
Don't forget that bit about the aquarium info.
Yeah, I think we got that too. Uh, 103 Masons, PLPZ 2024 058, a final site plan, special permit, applicant seeking approval to construct a three-story, seven-unit residential structure of uh, which one, two-bedroom unit be designated as an affordable housing unit located in CGB and CGIO zones, uh, whereas the applicant has been submitted pursuant to 6110 of the BZR, the project has made use of the 6110 incentives for FAR proposing 0.47, 749 where 0.3 is allowed. And height, the proposed 45 feet or 40 is allowed. As required, the property came before the commission as a pre-application at the 11/223 meeting under PLPZ 2023 382. Mission finds the DPW engineering issue comments dated 52324 indicating resubmital prior to zoning permit. Beta issued comments dated 32724 indicating recommendations for traffic signage, pavement markings as well, providing onsite bicycle parking. And DPW traffic issued a memo three confirming that a traffic impact review is not warranted. Uh, Grinch Fire Department comments dated 326, no challenges to accessing the building along the need for a full aquarium water evaluation. Recommended that EV charge should be kept a minimum of 20 feet from the building if located in the garage. E-fire suppression systems must be engineered for that purpose. ARC, the project was uh, reviewed at their 528 ARC meeting and issued a do not return motion with comment. EMAC issued comments, uh, 31324, the recommendations, the proposal. Conservation, um, issue comments, uh, 32624 were the recommendations to the proposal and the housing specialists, uh, has comments dated 328 uh, on the affordability, there are corrections needed prior to the finalization, wetlands issued a permit needs questionnaire in 21424 indicating no action required. And sewer issue comments on 3 And sewer issue comments on three, twenty-eight, twenty-four, requesting app, submit a signed letter acknowledging P N C comments. Therefore, motion to approve the application are the following. Uh, the, um, per G F D, uh, comments, the applicant has repolited the exterior charger to a minimum of twenty feet for the building. Uh, the per G F A, G F D comments, uh, if for any reason interior E V chargers locations in the parking layout or space count of the project should return. If for any reason interior E V charger locations change the parking layout or space count, the project should return to P N Z review. Uh, per G F D comments, the applicant has removed the driveway entrance island. Prior to zoning permit, all documents and drawings shall be revised to reflect this change. Uh, prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall provide, uh, the staff, the final fire department approved fire suppression sprinkler system. Such plan shall take into consideration the aquarium will serve letter and provide the required uh, national fire protection code, fire suppression system at all times. If such system results in any site, building or unit count revision, the applicant shall return to planning is on the vision for further review. Uh, prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall provide their custody revisions to the draft affordability plan. Per A R C comment, prior to zoning, the applicant shall submit, uh, paint swatches to staff. Um, and, uh, the architectural plans shall be, uh, revised to be consistent with the six, five, twenty-four renderings. Per sewer division comment, the applicant has submitted a signed letter acknowledging the receipt of their comments dated six, twenty-four, twenty-four. And prior to zoning permit, the final housing authority plan shall be reviewed by town of Greenwich Law and P N C staff and recorded. And the applicant shall address any and all or remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Ms. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. And we go to, hold on a second, the Putnam Indian Field School, Inc. For a final coastal site plan and special permit to increase the enrollment capacity from a hundred students to a hundred and twenty-five students and the overall enrollment beginning in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five academic year. Uh, at a parcel, a two-point-nine-seven-six-three acre parcel located at a hundred and one Indian Field Road in the R A one and coastal overlay zones. Uh, whereas the commission fa- notes that the terms capacity, onsite capacity, enrollment, maximum enrollment have been used interchangeably um, since the original approval for this application in nineteen ninety-three. Tracy, in nineteen ninety, ninety-three. Uh, whereas, uh, Kim Lee Horn has provided traffic comments on six, six, twenty-four um, in which, uh, it lists, uh, recommendations to address off-site queuing during pickup and drop-off hours and has also advised that additional queuing cannot be, that additional cars cannot be accommodated on site. Whereas D P W traffic, uh, commented on four, eight, twenty-four, and again on six, ten, twenty-four. Whereas Beta commented on four, eight and six, ten. Whereas the Health Department, uh, provided its sign off on four, two. Whereas Sewer advised that this, uh, property is not within the sewer boundary zone on April third. Whereas the fire, fire marshal signed off on eight, twenty-five of twenty-three. Uh, whereas the Greenwich, uh, Police Department ha- has advised no comment. Whereas the zoning enforcement officer, uh, advised no issues with the application on six, nineteen, twenty-three. Whereas I W W A, uh, advised no permit would be required on two, twenty, twenty-four. Uh, this application is hereby approved as follows. Going forward, the maximum enrollment onsite is approved at a hundred and eighty-three plus children with no more than a hundred and twenty-five children onsite at any time. Only, but as as approved and authorized by the State Department, the Connecticut State Department of Education Office of Early Childhood Education. The applicant is to mim, is to implement all, uh, rec- all traffic management measures recommended by Kim Lee Horn in its reports and issue guidelines, draft the, and issue to parents, uh, guidelines along the lines of the draft provided to the commission and shall abide by any other conditions in previously approved applications that it has submitted to the commission. Uh, and, uh, respond to any other outstanding staff and departmental comments. Did I leave anything out? Tracy, that was kind of quick. So what did I leave out?
So, so it's a hundred.
Approval date is, that's the first farm, the prior fire marshal, the fire marshal approval date is more recent. I just, I have to pull up what it is, but.
Hold on, hold on a second. I wrote it down, but maybe I just wrote it down wrong because I was going fast.
He, he provided, there was multiple.
Oh, eight, twenty-five. Okay. So the first one, oh, I'm sorry. I've got it here. Eight, twenty-five, twenty-three. And then four, five, two, twenty, twenty-four with a final approval on four, eight, twenty-four.
Yeah.
Um, yep, I just went through that paragraph too fast. Um, okay, and with that, um, did I leave anything out?
No, it's a, it's a hundred and eighty-three, plus or minus two percent.
Just plus two percent and one twenty-five, but only if also approved by the State Department of Education Office of Early Childhood Education. They have to implement all the traffic recommendations, all the traffic management. We acknowledge that they can't handle anything more on site. Um, and I'm, I'm assuming that everything got incorporated into what Kim Lee Horn did.
Right.
Okay, do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Second.
Ooh, Levy beat McRae. Levy has seconded. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Jenkins?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. We got four finished in under nine o'clock. I had a text from somebody tonight who said we weren't going to finish till midnight. And I said, I have the same feeling. I was wrong.
Yeah. Thank you to whoever said that.
I know, that was good, right?
Motivation.
Yeah, they motivated us, but we got lucky because Tessie didn't do a presentation.
There you go.
Um, okay, does anybody have anything before we go off?
We should all meet at the little pub.
I know. I was thinking, I was thinking. Yeah, I had other dog-related plans, actually.
Dogs are, are invited.
Dogs are invited. Okay, so we'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Dogs are welcome everywhere.
Yeah, they, that's what Tessie says anyway. All right, okay. See you guys soon.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Bye. Thanks for being here. Thank you. Oh, Patrick, Patrick, oh, before you two go, what would you think of having an ice cream social?
I mean, you can't, don't threaten me with a good time.
Okay, so I'm thinking, what if like at four o'clock in the afternoon on a.